So we will, we will get going. We will open this meeting at six thirty. Uh PM. This is Monday, July the twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two. And this is the City of Sandy Planning Commission Meeting. And it is being conducted uh totally uh online via Zoom. So the first thing we will do is find out who's here, although we know, but we'll take a roll call.
Uh Commissioner Wegener. Commissioner Lee. Commissioner McLean Wenzel.
Here. Oops, yeah.
You're good. Commissioner Pullen.
Here.
Commissioner Maite.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hook.
Here.
And Chairman Crosby.
Here. Great, we've got a full house. You uh had in the packet the draft minutes for the June twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Does anybody have any um additions or changes, corrections that they noted that need to be made? Okay, nothing seen or heard, so we'll consider the minutes approved as presented. This is the time when we'll give opportunity for anybody in the public who may be listening or viewing to give comments that are unrelated to anything that's on tonight's agenda. And I'll ask Kelly if we've got any other people in the room.
You do have four people in attendance. I believe all four of them are either applicants or here for other items.
Okay.
But we'll, we can just give it like twenty seconds to see if they raise their hand.
Yeah, so if you are here and you just want to speak to the planning commission on an issue that's not on uh tonight's agenda. Uh just raise your, let us know that you want to speak. If you're on Zoom, click the raise hand button. And wait for Kelly to be, to recognize you. If you're on the telephone, it's a star nine will effectively raise your hand and then wait to be recognized.
So I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. Um, did you have a director's report? There wasn't anything attached, but anything that you wanna bring up, Kelly?
Yeah, I, the reason for that, uh Chairman, as I was on vacation for about eleven or twelve days there in the middle of the month and didn't have time to put a report together. I didn't really have a lot. I think I did a pretty extensive report the previous meeting. Uh I know you weren't in attendance, but that went over a lot of our long-range planning objectives we're undertaking right now. I will um let everybody know that on August fifteenth, we will be presenting uh housing needs analysis change order to the comp plan to the city council. And looking for their approval uh to add that to the comp plan work. Especially considering that Hospital two thousand three is requiring that we do it by two thousand twenty-five anyways. So it's, it, it's really good timing just to do it with the comp plan update. And so if anybody wants to write in their support for that, I would be glad to take your support and pass it on to Jeff Aprody, the city recorder, and he could include it in the council packet. It's about a thirty-eight thousand dollar addition to the comp plan. But I think it's a very helpful and needed item. Uh as I said, the state's gonna require that we update it within the next three years anyways. The other thing I just want to remind everybody about is that the August meeting will only occur if one of the items tonight is continued, which I'm which I'm hopeful will not happen, but you never know. Otherwise, the next meeting would be the September meeting. I believe you did receive an invite though to the August fifteenth city council work session uh from Jeff. And that is for an update on the comp plan. And that will be presented by Three J Consulting or consultants on that. So that would be uh starting at six PM on August fifteenth. And we only have an hour for that, so I think by seven PM at the latest, we'd be finished. So if you can join, that'd be great. Uh it is a work session. And I think with that, that's all I had for you tonight.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Any commissioner have any thing that you want to raise to discuss that's not on the agenda tonight, things that come to mind? Questions?
It looks like you have a hand raised from Commissioner Hook.
I'm trying to, I don't, okay, there it is. I got it. Yes, go ahead, uh Stephen.
So um on behalf of the Rotary Club of Sandy, wanted to thank uh Shelley for coming to the latest meeting uh that was held. We appreciated having um open discussion. Um, the, this was a information sharing about the comp plan as well as a, a community or community gathering and members of the, the club felt that uh it was very valuable and appreciated uh the city sending her out to help educate the club.
Thank you. We will make sure she uh she hears that. Any other comments, questions, general from any commissioner? Okay. Well, we'll move on to our new business. There was no old, old business to take care of. We have two public hearings this evening. And just so you know, I am going to um chair the first public hearing. And then um assuming that I, we get a motion to uh have Chris uh Commissioner Maite uh chair the second public hearing. And the original plan was he would be sharing the whole meeting, but uh we adjusted our camping plans. And uh moved it a couple of days later, so um I'm here and but I didn't want to let him off the hook that easily. And uh we talked and uh flipped the coin and, and he got the second public hearing and I got the first one. But I'll, I'll call for a, a motion that, that he be allowed to do that, that, at uh Kelly's recommendation. So with no further ado, at six thirty-seven, I will uh call to order the public hearing for file twenty-two dash zero-two-six. Uh it's an appeal, partition appeal, Tickle Creek uh partition appeal. Call for any abstentions from any commissioner? Any conflicts of interest to declare? Okay, I'm seeing nothing. Any expertise contact uh which would include any site visits? I would say I drive by it uh every day, twice a day to work and from work. And then to the public, call for any challenges to any commissioner? And again, if you want to speak, uh hit the raise, raise hand button or star nine. All right, if you testify. And none? Okay. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Any party may request that the hearing be continued to a later date or that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. And I forgot to mention uh upfront that this is a uh de novo hearing. And what that means, it's like we're starting all over. It's as if uh we have, the commission has received this partition request. And um so it can allow new testimony and, and so forth. Any questions on that? All right, we'll go to staff report.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, and the importance of the de novo, especially on this one is um in case there's any new evidence that wants to be submitted that we can take it in or account for it, uh which is especially important without our city attorney here tonight. So let me share my screen and I will present a brief slideshow on this. Oh, come on now. There we go. Everybody see my cursor? I'm gonna try to use it during the presentation. Okay, so I'll just jump straight into this. As, as most of you know, the location of this, this is Highway twenty-six right here. This is the safe way where my cursor is located. And so Ruben Lane is the road right across from like the McDonald's in KFC. And if you go down Ruben Lane to Debarco, this is the subject site here in red outline. So the request is to do a uh two lot partition. Right now it's one legal lot of record and they're looking to make it into two. And it's kind of being done concurrently, well, not kind of, it is being done concurrently with development that's occurring on the site. Parcel one's actually being developed, I believe, into a sixty-seven unit or condo uh complex. And so right now they're doing underground utilities and site improvements. And that's why I referenced Tickle Creek Village. That's what it's called. So if you drive by there on Debarco Road, you see a retaining wall, some new sidewalk and a bunch of construction happening on the site. That's, that's what that is. It's a condominium complex that will be built there in the near future. So this is kind of turned um a little bit sideways, but it was the only way to fit it on the presentation and still have it at the full scale. Um so the North Arrow is pointing um over here where my cursor is. So this is where Highway twenty-six is up here. And the complex, the condominium complex is located down here in the southern portion. And as you can see on this diagram, it shows a bunch of buildings. And then it shows an approximate line of the partition, which is shown on the next slide as well. There's a big wetland on this site with a creek. And then there's some uphill area through here and then a potential small developable area up here. Um so parcel one, which I'll show you on this slide, is the area down here on the south portion, which is being developed. And parcel two is the creek wetland sloped area and then the little area by um Ruben Lane or Freeway Lane. So here are just a few pictures to kind of orient yourself if you drove by there recently. Uh parcel one is the picture on the bottom of your screen and parcel two has the wetland and the wooded area that's shown up above that. So the, the two items really, I mean, you could open up the whole partition application if you want. It is de novo. Um and I'll explain that or I can go into that more if you would like to. But what staff is really recommending at this point is that it's for the most part, it, you know, it was appealed, but in all honesty, it's a pretty simple partition request. So I would rather than do that, I would prefer that the commission just stick to the two items that are on appeal. However, that is your decision to make. Um so the, the two items on appeal, which I'll go into more detail, I just want to point them out on this map. One of them is concerning this easement, this existing easement that is for a sewer line. Uh that is being terminated and then they are creating a new easement. Where the new sewer line will be located. The second main issue that the applicant has is the improvements that are being required up here in this area. This is Ruben Lane that kind of comes down here to Debarco Road to Highway twenty-six. Whoops. For some reason, this is also called Ruben Lane, although we typically don't name streets that intersect the same names. I don't know why it was done that way on this plat. Um but that's neither here nor there. On other maps on Google Earth, for example, it's called Freeway Lane. Um you did receive one comment from Mr. Warnock. Part of that comment was correct in that the majority of Freeway Lane, which kind of runs through this property down to um Sunset, I believe it is, street down here. That is all a private road through the site. However, there is a very small portion um a hundred and twelve feet long of public right of way that was dedicated in the past. I was kind of stepped through the two reasons for appeal. So what staff really wants out of this, I'll just boil this down really quick, is that typically when we record a new plat, any easements that are going to be going away in the near future or that will be gone by the time it's being recorded, we would like those to be taken off the plat and done through a termination, recording of a termination to terminate the easement. And then also establishing the new easement on the face of plat. That's how we do every subdivision, every partition. This one's a little unique in that the other land use application with the condominium is really what's triggering the sewer uh movement and the new easement. However, what we don't want to see happen is say this plaque gets recorded in October or September. And then a month later, the easement gets terminated, a new easement's established. And all of a sudden you have a plat that was just recorded that has basically bad data on it. Um and the only way you would know that it's bad data is if you do a, if you pull your title and see in your chain of title uh that, that easement was terminated and this other one was created. So instead of going through all that rigmarole, we would rather just have it all clean on the new plat that's recorded. You know, I'll let the applicant make their reasons for why they don't want that, but um that's, that's the reason for appeal number one. Reason for appeal number two is, I think, kind of a bigger issue in staff's opinion at least. And the reason why is because the code's very clear that when you do a partition, that you improve the frontage along the new lots. And so what they're, what they're requesting here is for a partition. What that does is that by section seventeen eighty-four twenty A one requires insulation of frontage improvements along that little tiny portion of Freeway Lane. Um I'll show you here. So this is what we're talking about is this, this red line area. Um, you know, again, as Mr. Warnock pointed out, it's not a heavy pedestrian um traveled section of right of way and nor probably will it be anytime soon. However, it's what the code says, it's what we apply to staff. The applicant never asked for a variance, so there was no reason to vary the code standard. Uh this is what it looks like right now. If you're at the intersection there and the improvements would just go, I think, down to about where these hedges are here. So again, I think this is the bigger part of the appeal. Um you know, if the commission decides that they don't want to require this, hopefully in the future, when that property parcel number two is developed, at that point, we would require this once again. So all it is, is delaying that. Um however, per the code, this is one of the two times when you're supposed to make sure that it happens either at partition or when it's developed. So if it doesn't happen now, it will happen in the future. Um like I said, though, no variance was requested, so I don't know how else staff was supposed to apply this code section. I guess we could have just ignored it, but um typically we don't do that. Typically, we follow the code and that's what we did in this case. So as Jerry said, our Commissioner Chairman Crosby said, this hearing will be a, a de novo hearing, I hope. Um on the record would just be a lot messier, especially if any new evidence is going to be submitted. And then the three options that staff believes you have are to uphold the staff decision from the final order twenty fifteen MP. Modify the staff decision after hearing from the applicant and the public. Or if you wanted to, you could outright deny the partition request. Um but like I said, I don't, I don't see any reason to do that. Uh but it is an option, so I wanted to put it on here. So that concludes my presentation. I didn't, I don't know if anybody had any specific questions at this point, or if they just want to go to the applicant's presentation.
Any, any questions for staff right now?
Kelly, I have one, or Chair Kelly, I have one. I just want to clarify what you said uh about that second part. Um if, if we allow the the land to not be improved on that partition or the frontage to be improved, um the next, when that property goes to be developed, it will have to be improved or a variance will have to be requested. Is that accurate?
That is correct. Um you know, the, the thing that I don't know if the applicant understands or if the applicant's representative fully understands, really to waive it, it should be a variance procedure. They're, they're asking for a variance to a code section. However, I, I don't really want to go through that at this point. If, if the commission decides that they're okay with waiting and modifying the, the decision, I'm fine with that and not going through a variance procedure. Um but yes, that is typically how it would be done, is if you decide tonight that you don't feel it's necessary at this time and you want to modify the final decision, then um when it goes to develop in the future, hopefully myself or whoever's working for the City of Sandy remembers to require it at that time.
Thanks for that clarification, Judge.
Okay, very good.
You, you have another commissioner with their hand.
Oh, yeah, Jan, go ahead.
Yes, uh I recall there was a letter from someone that was on that road who was indicating that it was not intended to be other than a private road and was thinking that adding the sidewalk there would actually be a detriment by bringing the public on the road. Um did staff review that letter and what was your thought?
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't know if I can really speak to the detriment side of it or not. Uh the first hundred and twelve feet of that road is a public right of way. So that does require to be improved. Uh Mr. Warnock, the gentleman that submitted that letter is correct, that after that first hundred and twelve feet, then it does become a private road. So I would, I would definitely agree with him that after that first hundred and twelve feet, we wouldn't want to require anything beyond that. But you know, if, if that parcel is developed with housing on it eventually, which I imagine it will be, this is an essential link for the people that live there to get onto Ruben and Debarco and to walk down to the Tickle Creek Trail and the new trail that Mr. Engler's putting on the southern piece of this property. So um I'm, I'm hopeful that if we decide not to require it tonight, that it doesn't get forgotten in the future.
Yeah.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel.
Yeah, um I guess my concern is that it not get forgotten later. So I mean, obviously with all that housing going in, we're gonna need as much connectivity for pedestrians and bicycles as possible. So um I guess what I'm wondering is how would you note that, Kelly? For whoever might be in charge when that comes back up, is there a way to, to note that? Or is it just whether or not we catch it?
We were hoping to have a G I, an integrated G I S system where we could add notes to it, but that has never occurred. There's been issues with that. And so right now, it's just, hopefully when somebody reviews it in the future, uh they can look back to this decision um and see that it was decided not to be required at this time and that now it's required.
So could we make a notation then that the, if we decide to not require it right now, could we make a notation in the write-up that says that it is expected that will require by, as by code, that it will be required next time? So that it, it kind of pulls attention to it?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a really good idea. If you did decide to waive it for now, I would think it would be wise to add it as a general condition of approval for, you know, prior to future development or concurrently with future development is how I'd word it, that these improvements are installed.
Mm-hmm.
I think that'd be very wise to put it in the general conditions.
Yeah, cuz most often when a new development comes, staff will pull up any previous um activity on that property. And that would, that would put it uh to the forefront.
Correct.
Did you have anything else? Uh?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to promote uh Mr. Engler and Mr. Brown cuz they're the two people speaking on the side. I'm, oh, sorry, Stephen.
And yeah, just be, just before they, I give them the floor, Commissioner Hook has a comment or question.
Thank you, Chair. Uh Kelly, did the applicant ever discuss this during the application process? Uh any pre-meetings so that they could have been told the proper procedure for variance?
Uh we did not hold a pre-application meeting on this because we felt like it could be handled without a pre-op. So there, no, not really.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any more hands popping up. So we will turn it over to the applicant and your team. And I believe uh Kelly has given you all rights in the meetings, meeting.
Hi, my name is uh Tracy Brown. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, I was wait, okay, now I'm joining as panelists cuz I was waiting.
You just unmuted.
Okay.
There.
All right, we might be there now. All right, yeah. Thank you. Tracy Brown, one seven zero seven five for Drive and Sandy. And I'm representing the applicant, which is Dubarco Development Corporation. And as you know, Kelly mentioned, this is really the purpose of this partition is to, for the applicant to segregate the condo project, which was approved a couple of years ago from the rest of the property. He wants to make sure that um, you know, the condo owners and the homeowners association aren't, you know, on the hook for what happens with the pond and things like that. So really, that was the primary intent of doing this partition. Um we felt it was pretty straightforward. So I guess regarding, you know, Kelly mentioned it, the condo project is sixty-seven units. It's about ten point four acres. And so there would be two parcels, the northern parcel um and the uh parcel two, which contains the pond. So as you mentioned, there, there are two conditions or two points, I guess, and a couple of conditions that were appealing. First is regarding the sanitary sewer. And really, my understanding of the applicant's concern is he just feels that this this condition is already contained within the um condo approval, Tickle Creek condo approval. And he feels it would just kind of potentially kind of muddy things up if it were include, also included in this. He is planning to amend, so there's an existing easement that goes through the property. Um and that easement is in the wrong location, so it's and the sewer is in the uh location that needs to be moved. So this is all on parcel one. And Kelly can bring up the plan that shows that, but I can just talk about it. So his, his proposal, rather than um terminating the existing easement and uh recording a new easement, what he's proposing to do is just amending the existing easement and with a new sketch showing the location of the sewer line. So there's two things going on with that. The the easement, um current easement, the sewer is not contained within that easement. And he's moving the, the sewer. And so now the new sewer, which he's building, will be contained in the new easement. But that can be accomplished through an amendment or a modification to the um document recording that easement. On the second item, you know, I guess the alternative to removing, so there's three conditions, condition A one and A three, the third bullet, and there's also condition A two that talk about, or condition A two talks about the frontage improvements. So on that, on that particular one, actually, I just kind of learned recently that reason, we believe the reason that Ruben Lane is shown as that stub, as Kelly indicated, as well as going down the hill, is cuz Ruben Lane used to just terminate into that location. So it came around off the highway and then it just basically went around the corner to that industrial or freightway lane. And then over time, Ruben Lane was um platted, reconstructed and to go down the hill. So that road name, I guess, has never changed. One alternative, you know, that road, that street stub really doesn't serve anybody except um Freightway Lane. And one solution can be to vacate that stub as public right of way cuz it's really never going to be extended into the future. So that may be something uh for the planning commission to consider, you know, that the, the process for vacating isn't something that you would be considering tonight, but this is just kind of information. The, the process for vacating isn't something that you would be considering tonight, but this is just kind of information. As you, uh, think about options and how to, uh, deal with this. So you know, as it mentioned, Freightway Lane is a private road and it, um. The applicant's property has just a small portion of road that's a budding or small portion of the property that's budding this road. Or right of way, it's unlikely that Freightway, Freightway Lane will ever be extended as a public street and so the need. To build sidewalks to the end of that. Uh, portion of right of way, um, really isn't necessary. The other thing that the applicant has concern about, if the improvements are required now. That he doesn't know, he doesn't have any plans to develop that property, doesn't know where there would be a driveway. Curb drops and all that kind of stuff and so any improvements that were done today or, you know, with this. Uh, partition would, could likely be torn out later. Because he doesn't know how that property will be developed, so that, that would be. A reason for deferring the improvements and that was our kind of alternative plan. You know, we prefer that the improvements aren't required, but in the alternative, he would be in agreement with just deferring those. To, uh, when the property is developed further, you know, and it's possible between. Now and, and when it is developed, he could consider, uh, pursuing a vacation of that little stub. Of, uh, right of way. I think that those are the main things, so you know, he has no plans to develop a property. Any improvement done today, we don't really know, it just talks about improvements, it doesn't really spell out in the condition. What those improvements exactly are. Um, and we don't know where there would be any sort of an access or curb drop, so it really makes sense. Since it is a single lot to do that kind of, which is typical of single lots. To defer it until prior to, uh, you know, certificate of occupancy as part of the building plan process. Rather than as part of the partition process. I think that concludes my presentation. I don't know if the applicant, he did, he indicated he didn't want to necessarily speak. So, um, I think that concludes our presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Okay, thank you very much. We will, um, move ahead to public testimony. And, uh, for anybody who's listening, we will be calling for, or viewing. Public testimony in three formats. We'll first call for those who are, uh, in favor of the proposal. And then followed by those who are against the proposal and finally for anybody who's just neutral. And has general comments, uh, uh, about the proposal. As I stated before, if you're on Zoom and you want to speak. Hit the raise hand button and wait for Kelly or myself to recognize you and then. If you're on the telephone, it is, uh, star nine, so. With no further ado, we'll call for any public testimony. If you are in favor of this proposal. Um, please raise your hand and be recognized.
I did not see any hands raised.
Okay, nothing seen or heard, so we'll move on. If you are, uh, not in favor of the proposal. You are against it. Please raise your hand to be recognized.
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, and finally, if you are just neutral, just have a general comment or question about the proposal, please raise your hand.
Again, no hands raised.
Okay, that's, uh, concludes the opportunity for public testimony. And we'll move on to, uh, staff recap if you have anything further to add, Kelly.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get where Trace is going with the termination of the right of way, but. I don't really want to consider any of that tonight. That's not what we're here for. That's a separate procedure that actually goes before the city council, which is a recommendation from the commission. So I would not. I would not support putting anything in your decision from tonight about a termination of right of way. Um, if that wants to be looked at in the future, the applicant is more than welcome to apply for that after going through a pre-op. And we can, you know, go down that road. But I, I, I really don't want that to be included because I don't want there to be a condition that we don't even know if it can be satisfied or not. And if we say something like upon future potential. Vacation of the right of way, these improvements will not have to be constructed. I think that's getting way too messy. So I, I would rather just stay with the decision that staffs already rendered or modify the decision that I rendered to say. You know, what Hollis was, which Commissioner McLean Wenzel was mentioning that. Upon, you know, concurrently with future development, the right of way will be improved. Uh, but I, I don't really want to touch the street vacation thing tonight. Other than that, I think my position just still is the same that. You know, I think in the future, just so this applicant and other people know that if. You don't want a certain code section to apply when we're reviewing it, a, a variance procedure would have been the best way to approach that. I don't know, you know, it's not really highly valuable to have the pedestrian improvements right now. It's just what the code wants. Um, so it's not a big deal either way to me. I, I do think the other one with the re, you know, the, the plat being cleaned with. The modified easement, I think it would still be nice to have that on there. Uh, but again, I, I don't think it's a big enough deal that I'm not going to be bent out of shape one way or the other. So, um, that, that, yeah, I don't really have anything else. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Well, um, any rebuttal, uh, Mister Brown? Oh, there you are.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was, forgot to push the other button. Yeah, I guess the other thing I'd say, yeah, I wasn't necessarily suggesting that you entertain the vacation tonight. I just wanted to. Bring that up as a, um, I guess a further reason to maybe defer the improvements. So I had, I had included, you know, what could be. Uh, you know, a draft condition of install frontage improvements along Freightway Lane in the corner radius prior to issuance. Of a final certificate of occupancy for a dwelling approved and constructed on parcel two. So that, that would be our preference and then, you know, as he, Kelly mentioned, I agree that it would be, it's a whole separate process. That the applicant would have to go through and it's, um. Be something the city council will look at and there would have to be an easement created for the industrial park and all this kind of thing. The other one, you know, it's just regarding the sanitary sewer. I don't know, it's a huge deal. The applicant's getting pretty close to getting that. Easement, I believe he's submitted it to the city and so. Uh, to require it to be put on the plat would just kind of defer that and again, it's already a requirement with his other development. To have that easement recorded. So there, there's not that much benefit in doing it, um, with this cuz there will be a sketch that will be recorded. With the, um, the other approval and that's, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we can move into our discussion. Any, um. Initial. Comments or questions? I have, I have one for Kelly. I gotta find it here. Where did it go? On your, um. Final appeal. Oh, shoot. Trying to find the document that just talked about having on Ruben Lane, a, um. Uh, some wording about, um. Non-vehicle access. That's what I'm wanting is find that phrasing.
Yeah, a vehicle non-access reserve strip.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, we don't, we basically don't want any future driveway to go out to Ruben Lane.
Okay, and that's, that's one of the things that I was. Triggered my thinking that if that be the case, then any future development has to come out on that little stub.
That's correct.
So it will have to have, if there is development, it will have to have, I assume, some sort of a curb cut. You know, a driveway or something, uh, at that point because you cannot do it. Anywhere coming down Ruben Lane.
That is correct, yeah. I mean, curbs are put in all the time in new subdivisions and then cut out later on. Not saying that, not saying that that's the best, it's kind of wasteful in my opinion, but that is how it's done a lot of times. Yeah, that is correct. Uh, Ruben Lane, it, so the, the development code's very. Straightforward on this is that when you have an opportunity to take access from a low order, lower order street. Which in, in this case would be that little short Ruben Lane Freightway Lane portion, you have to take access from the lower order street.
And Tracy was right, uh, because I remember when Ruben Lane just stopped there, so it makes total sense that. That it was considered by some to have gone down the hill to the left there. It was a great day when they put Ruben Lane through.
Yeah, we, just so you know, we have one other. At least one other example of this in Sandy that we're actually working with the county to clear up. Um, Agnes Street on the north end of town, there is a west-east portion and also a north-south portion. Uh, and we're trying, we're going through the process and working with the county to change the name of the north-south portion, so. It's unique, it's unique but not unheard of.
Commissioner Wagner, your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anything that would stop them from creating a driveway there and taking their best guess at it? I mean, it's only a hundred and twelve square feet. And obviously you're not going to put it near the corner. Um, is there anything to just take their best guess and like slightly adjust it if they need to later?
Um, no, I don't, I mean, I think you're spot on that you'd want to locate it as far away from the intersection as possible, so. You'd probably be hugging it as far east as possible, so. You might not be able to exactly put it, you know, down to the foot where you want it, but yeah, you, you probably could get it pretty close. I think the bigger concern that I heard from Mister Brown is that. They currently don't have construction plans put together on how they would build the facility, so I'm sure that's as big or a bigger.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I guess my, my only comment would be, I certainly don't want us to start giving away right of way. Um, issues and especially since developments for housing are going in down in that area. And that's not a particularly pedestrian friendly or even bicycle friendly. Uh, road going down that way, so I wouldn't want us to even think about that, so I think it is, it would be really a great idea. To do the general condition of improvement for, you know, on, for future development. I don't know if I can say it the way that Kelly did, um, but to have that in our, in our recommendations today that it, that it get done. Um, if, if the land is ever developed because that goes along with. All of the planning that we're doing in the city to make things contiguous for connectivity. Um, for bicycles and pedestrians, so I just want to make sure we keep that in front of us. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hook.
Uh, I'm, could go either way with the first portion of the appeal, but on the second, uh. Item, I feel that it's, it's difficult to put a condition to do this later. When, when and if they decide to develop that second. Um, portion, that would require its own new application. And that application that would have its own conditions and it would require that staff go back through and catch that we had a condition. On this one and. Oftentimes these things get missed and I would hate for it to get missed. And so I would not be in support of moving this to a, a future date. My recommendation would be that, that we continue with staff's decision. And if the applicant so desires, they can request a modification, I believe, uh, of their. Application and, uh, request of variance, but I'm not sure on the actual policy for. For how that works, so I'd leave that to Kelly to help explain further.
Yeah, at this point, if you render a decision with staying with the staff's decision that they would have, and, and they don't like that, they would have to appeal it to the city council. Yes.
Hey, uh, was that all, Commissioner Hook?
That is all, thank you.
Uh, before I turn it over to Commissioner Mayton, the one comment I have kind of in response to what Commissioner Hook said is. I would be kind of on the other side. That, and that's why I got my clarification from Kelly that the, when that. Partition two, lot two develops, it has to have access from that little section of Ruben Lane. So there's, there's no way that you could develop that and not. Improve that section because that's the only way you're going to be able to get into it. So that's why I would be more open to moving it down the road cuz I don't think it would get missed. Because of the fact that, um, it's the only, it's the only place. Go ahead, Commissioner Mayton.
Thanks, Chair. Uh, Kelly, really a, a question for you first on the first item, which is, um. You know, that sewer line, per seventeen eighty-four ninety sub bullet F, they're required to plat that change. So I guess for the record, I'm curious if you could let us know, what is the cost and time associated with. Recording that, that new sewer John two and a new plat?
I mean, it's just the modification to the easement and then whatever their surveyor would, uh. Charge them to modify the tentative plat.
Thank you.
I, you know, I, it's not, it's not gonna be free, but it's also not gonna be thousands and thousands of dollars. The, the other thing I don't, the other thing I don't know how aware everybody is, but. The county surveyor is not, I'm not trying to bash them here, but they're not especially fast. So they're not going to be recording a new plat even with the decision tonight for a few months. Cuz they had to submit a tentative plat to my office, we review that. Then we give, you know, the okay to the county office, that takes at least a month or two, so it's, it's probably going to be at least October before anything gets recorded.
Thank you, Kelly. As usually I know the answers to most of those questions, I'd just like to get it on the public record so everybody listens back, they can hear it. Um, so you can see my, my vote for the first one is to make them recorded on the plat. As far as the second one goes, um, I, I kind of, um. I, I like the idea of putting a note, but I, I think, um, for me. I think it's gonna be a requirement of the new land application for that, um, in the future. Uh, somebody's gonna try to present what they're gonna build and ask for that and it's gonna be incumbent upon our planning department to catch that. Um, that's their responsibility, that's what they're there for, so I don't see any reason. Why we need to do this today for them, that piece of, uh, that piece of frontage there is. Not really improvable as it sits through my lens and we would only be creating a hazard. Um, if we did anything today without putting street frontage on it, so, um, I vote that they do the plat. Uh, and then we do not require them to do the, the frontage improvements, uh, however, with that being said. Both of those items could have been addressed early on during a variance request and not have to come to this.
Okay, Commissioner Lee.
Yes, um, I also concur that there should be a notation on the plat and. That, uh, piece of hundred and twelve feet should be considered in the future when it's ready to be developed.
Hey, thank you. Um, question I have for Kelly. The applicant's, um. Proposal on the, um, on the sewer line easement. Proposal on the, um, on the sewer line easement. If, if I'm understanding it, it's, it's not so much to actually put it on the actual plat, but to have a, they talk about having a sketch. Kind of a separate document. That would be, at, at some point or another, it would have to be referenced on the plat, I would, maybe not, if the plat's not gonna get changed, so. So what you're, um, advocating for, as you, I think the phrase you use is more cleaner. It gets it all on that official plat map that this is where it is, you don't have to look to a, a second document. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct, and if the plat's recorded before those easements are recorded. And the updated easement is not noted on the plat. The only way future owners of that property or anybody looking at it's gonna know that there's a modified easement there is to pull the chain of title from a title company. They wouldn't be able to, the plat, the plat won't have a modification on it, right? So it will still reference an old outdated easement that has been modified or terminated or however they go about doing that. Uh, you know, hearing from Mr. Brown, I would say that. Either way, I think the language needs to be modified a little bit, because if they don't plan to terminate the easement, they plan to modify it. Um, so we, even if you stick with the requirement, we could, we can modify that language to be a little more flexible. I don't know if that makes sense, but. My assumption, typically what you do is you terminate an existing easement and then you record a new easement. It sounds like they want to modify the existing easement. I, technically, I don't know what, really what the difference is, because you're basically getting rid of the existing easement and you're getting your new recording number for the new one. So I think it's basically the same thing, but. There's some slight variation in the technical terms, I guess.
Okay, I, I think we're probably done with any, uh, further applicant testimony. We haven't had any questions anyway, so I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, the motion has been made by Commissioner Wagner, seconded by Commissioner Mayton to close the public hearing at seven twenty-two. Any further discussion, um, I'm. I think everything I've heard regarding the, uh, easement. Was to, uh, pointed, pointed to, uh, commission's desire to stay with staff's. Uh, decision on requiring it to be platted. Uh, before I go on though, Commissioner Hook, you have a question or comment?
Uh, I'd like to request that we, uh, take two separate votes, one for each item.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out how that would alter the final decision. So we could uphold one. One aspect, and maybe not the others, is that, is that the way it worked out, Kelly?
Yeah, I think, I think it's Commissioner Hook, I think he's asking for that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, but. I think he's asking for that in case he wants to support modifying one of them. And not support modifying the other or vice versa, um, just so it's on the record, I don't, I'll let him speak to that.
That is correct.
Yeah, so we, we've done that in the past, so I think you, you would want to have maybe. Two separate motions, I think, I think we can handle it, and then the final order would reflect those two motions.
Okay. Okay, motions with, uh, roll call votes.
Uh, yeah, I think that's what Commissioner Hook is asking for.
Okay, anything further, Commissioner Hook? You're, I see your hand still up.
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wagner.
Yeah, just a question on that, aren't we technically approving the whole thing? So wouldn't, rather than, we're not necessarily approving two variances, we're approving one big thing, Gary, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you. Yeah, it makes the motion a little bit, I mean, one way you could do it. And I've, we've done this before as well, is you could just do straw poles on the two, and then based on those straw two poles, then you could do a funnel motion. For approval of the partition. With, uh, the decisions from those two straw poles.
Would you be comfortable with something like that, Commissioner Hook?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, then we'll start with the, um. The first one, which is the, um. Plating of the sewer line, correct? I don't have my. Thing right in front of me.
Yeah, it's basic, it's basically to have the modified sewer line easement on the plat.
On the plat. Okay, so we'll do a straw vote on that, and I think we can just do that with a thumbs up kind of thing. So if you are in favor of, this would be, in a sense, it'd be upholding staff's decision on the appeal. To require that the easement be included on a plat. If you are in favor of that, we give a thumbs up. Ask everybody.
Yep, that's seven, nothing.
Okay, the other issue is, um, the frontage improvements. On that hundred and twelve-foot piece of, uh, freightway or, or, uh, Ruben Lane. How many would be, if you would be in favor, I'm going to do it of, um. We'll do it according to the way it's written in the current appeal. If you are in favor of upholding the staff's position, that it be required to be developed now with the partition. Uh, put your thumb up. Okay, I just see two, which would be. That the majority would say to, um. As we've discussed, make it required with future development. Which. That, oh, there was a thumb up, the third, the third one. Still, we have the majority, I think, on the, uh. On the matter of, um. Of not requiring it with the petition, partition. So that would have, that would. Formate, formulate our motion. From that straw vote, the motion would be to uphold staff's decision regarding the easement plat. And remove the condition that the frontage. The, um, developments, improvements be made now with this, with the, um, partition. And we've also talked about making sure that there's verbiage in our final report that would say. That, that. Frontage improvements would have to be done at the time of. The future development, so that's, let's hold that, because I see a couple of hands up that may be asking, uh, for same, Commissioner Hook.
I would just say that we would, for procedural rise, that it would be a motion to modify. The, the judgment made by staff.
That is correct. And Commissioner Mayton.
That's true, thanks. I just wanted to know if, uh, you wanted to put on the record, the, the, uh, the opposition on the second piece. If it needed to be stated, instead of just thumbs down or thumbs up, did you want to recognize who was pro and who was against that vote?
Um, how do the rest of you feel? I'm, I'm certainly comfortable with saying that there were three. That felt the other way, do you want your names in the record, or? What's your, what's your?
I, except I think that I misheard you, I think I got a glitch, and when you said something and I added my thumb. I thought we were making a motion the other way, or you were mentioning the, the next side of things.
Okay.
So I think there was two.
You want to rescind your thumbs up?
I'm rescinding my thumbs up. On basis of the glitch.
Okay, another comment, Commissioner McLean Wenzel. Uh, there you go.
Yeah, I, I just would like to see, uh, in the record, so if there's two people that are opposing, I'd like, I'd like. And I think that's what Commissioner Hook wanted anyway, so I, I think it's a good idea to record who, who is.
Okay.
Who is for.
So I believe it was Commissioner Hook and Commissioner Wagner. Who did, do ex. Did not express support of. Of not requi, I'm getting too many negatives in here, of not requiring the frontage, uh, improvements.
Kelly, we were supporting the staff's decision. And not mod, not modifying.
Correct. That, that'd be a way that.
Yeah, so. So what we'll, what we'll do is we'll add that information to the minutes and probably not the final order. The final order will reflect more to the final judgment, the minutes will reflect what your discussion was.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
Chair, I'll give it, I'll, I'll give it a shot. Oh, I gotta get the file in, here it is. So Chair, the motion for file twenty-two dash zero two-six is to uphold the staff's. A recommendation on the easement and plat. Improvement and to modify the existing condition for frontage. To have a note that says it'll be a requirement for future development.
I second that.
Okay, the motion has been made by Commissioner Mayton, seconded by Commissioner Reclaim Wenzel. To uphold staff's decision, uh, regarding the, uh, sewer line, uh, easement. And to modify the decision regarding the, um, frontage improvements. To not require it at this time, but to put noted, to note strongly that, um. It be required at future development.
And just to clarify, I'm, I'm positive you meant to include this in the motion, but all other findings and conditions remain. Is that correct?
I don't know that it was mentioned, but I think it was assumed.
Not mentioned, correct.
Okay, we'll go for a roll call vote.
Hey, Commissioner Wagner?
Hi.
Commissioner Mayton?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
I'm sorry, I thought you called on me before, but I vote yes again.
Commissioner Hook?
No, for reasons stated previously.
Commissioner Pullen?
Yes.
Chair Crosby?
Yes. A motion carries.
Did I get everybody?
I think so.
Okay, sorry.
If you were missed, raise your hand. Jump up and down. Okay, are we okay to just keep rolling, or? All right, well, as I said before, I would like a motion that would. Allow or permit Commissioner Mayton to chair the next public hearing.
I would like.
Commissioner, Commissioner Lee had her hand up, so.
Yes, I would move that Commissioner Mayton, um, handle the hearing for the next agenda item. Or the hearing.
I would second that.
Okay, then moved and seconded to, uh, allow Commissioner Mayton to share the next public hearing. I think we can just do a voice vote or a thumbs up. Uh, in favor, thumbs up. I see those thumbs. Oh, you're, you're too humble, Chris. All right, take it over.
All right, so if I make any mistakes, please, please catch me along the way, so I apologize, I've been here three and a half years, but I've never done this, so. I'm, I'm gonna open the public hearing for Land Use File Number two-two dash zero-one-two. The time is seven thirty-five P M. I'm gonna call for any abstentions from the commission or hearing body. None seen or heard, gonna call for any conflicts of interest from the hearing body or commission? None seen or heard? Um, can I ask for any ex parte contact, including any site visits?
I would have to say I'm a member of the gym, so I drive by there, uh, probably not as often as I should, but, uh. I am familiar and drive by the site.
Uh, Commissioner Wagner? I'll add that I'm also a member of the gym, uh, and I frequent surrounding businesses. I've driven by quite frequently.
I must say, I'm also a member of the gym and drive by it frequently, so that's my ex parte contact. Any others?
And I would also say that, uh, I shop some of the local businesses there in that lot, and, uh, I've also, uh, driven by.
All right.
I guess, I guess if we're talking about shopping in that area, then I would have to say I shop in that area as well.
Think that's got everyone. So then I will call for any challenges to any members of the hearing body, just remember to bring a challenge if you're participating online. Click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized, if you're participating via phone, dial nine, raise your hand. And wait to be recognized, any challenges to the commission? I don't see anyone.
I don't see any hands raised.
All right. So next, um. I think I go to number six, you told me, Jerry, so if you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it, uh, later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved or included. Your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise a specific issue at the final evidentiary hearing, or by the close of record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow. Local government or its designated respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Any party may request that the hearing be continued to a later date, or that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity. To allow the local government or its designated respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in circuit court. I'll go ahead and call for the staff report.
All right. All right, so tonight we are reviewing the proposed Riffle food cart pod. Um, so it sounds like most of you are gym members and quite aware of the site, but for anybody else, um, the three parcels that are. Uh, that we'll be talking about tonight are, um, in red there, um, and again, that, that northernmost parcel is the gym. Um, and then the two vacant parcels to the south of that are the other two. Uh, just a closer up look here, so again, the northern one is where the current gym is, and then the two vacant parcels there are where the proposed. Uh, food cart pod and parking would be located. So the proposal we're looking at, just, um, in summary, it's a food cart pod, it has room for eighteen food cart pads. It has a shared thirty-six hundred score foot dining facility, associated parking, and then landscaping in a natural area. There's three tax lots involved, tax lot one thousand is a surface, uh, parking lot. Or proposed to be a surface parking lot, tax lot eleven hundred, which is the, um, the gym parking lot. Is where some of the proposed retention trees would be, and also a portion of the parking lot. Um, that would be on tax lot one thousand, would also extend on to the tax lot eleven hundred. And then tax lot twelve hundred is where the proposed food cart pod itself would be with additional surface parking and some retention trees. So this is the site location plan submitted by the applicant, that kind of gives, uh, context again, so to the north is the athletic club. To the south is the Fresenius Stylus Center and Panda Express. And then you can see the proposal for the two main vacant lots there, with the parking on the left, and then parking and, um, the food cart pod area. On the, um, right. This is a, a zoom in of the overall site plan, so again, the parking on the left and then more parking, um, pay attention in the food cart pod on the right. The review procedures that we're doing tonight are type-three design review, type-two food cart pot, food cart review. A type-two tree removal permit, two type-two variances, five type-three special variances, and one type-three design deviation. Um, so it is quite a bit in terms of the actual analysis and reviews that we're, um, doing, so I will try and go through as efficiently as I can. I tried to lump things together, um, that made sense to lump together. Um, that made sense to lump together. So starting with the uh seven variances and the one design deviation. Just to outline those quickly. So they are requesting two type-two variances. The first is to exceed the maximum fifty-foot front yard setback on Decade Schmitz Ave. The second is to not have fifty percent of the site's street frontage be comprised of buildings placed within twenty feet of a sidewalk. Um, and then there's three type-three special variances to exceed the maximum height of the wall and fence in a commercial. Yard, so they're exceeding wanting to exceed the four-foot max for the front yard, which is the east side of the proposal. The eight-foot max for the side yard, which is the north side, and then the eight-foot max. For the rear yard, which is the west side. Um, they're requesting a type-three special variance to not provide civic space. Another type-three special variance to exceed the minimum off-street parking um by more than thirty percent. And then a type-three design deviation to not have the ground floor of the dining building face a public street or civic space with a direct pedestrian connection. So looking at the um first two variances and then the design deviation, those all basically have to do with building setbacks and site frontage. So again, they're they're asking to exceed the maximum fifty-foot front yard setback. To not have fifty percent of the frontage comprised of buildings within twenty within twenty feet. And then to not have the dining building face the public street with a direct pedestrian connection. So this just shows the proposal. You can see the um, the proposed food cart pod area is set back quite far from Kate Schmidt's Avenue right of way. And I just kind of highlighted the fifty-foot and twenty-foot setbacks there, so you can kind of see. Um, so the analysis for this, it's really um based on the required retention trees that were actually required as part of the twin cedar subdivision. Um, which was back in two thousand and four, and the tree covenant was it was recorded in two thousand and five for that one. Um, so the all the required retention trees for this entire, I think it's a seven-lot subdivision. Um, with the gym and and all of those other properties to the south. Um, a majority of the retention trees were well all. Were located on uh tax lot twelve hundred, which is where the food cart pod would go. And are adjacent to that Kate Schmidt's Avenue right of way. So granting a variance to allow the dining structure building and the food cart pod area to be located further back than fifty feet from Kate Schmidt's Avenue. Will better protect the um retention trees. Recommending approval of all three of those requested, well, two variances and one design deviation. Looking at the three variances related to wall and fence height. Um, again, they're asking to exceed the maximum um height of retaining wall and fence on three sides. The um, south side is in compliance with the eight-foot maximum, so that does not require a variance. Um, but the east side, they're proposing a five-foot fence on top of a six-foot, two to six-foot tall wall. The north side is a five-foot fence on top of a nine-and-a-half-foot wall. And then the west side um has. Has two different sections. West of the north carts would be a five-foot fence on top of a six-foot wall, and then um west of the south cart would be a five-foot fence on top of a five-foot wall. Um, so thinking about that, the retaining wall is uh needed due to the existing grade of the site, which is kind of um raised up from the rest of the surroundings. And then we're assuming the fence is needed for safety, so people don't fall off of it and probably also desired for security to keep people out of the food cart pod. Um, outside of business hours. These are a couple photos um from a site visit to the Troutdale and Fairview um parts that kind of look at a couple of the different fences. So you can see there's. A chain link on top of a wall. Um, a majority of it is the like kind of tubular or vertical. Uh, black aluminum or steel fencing. Um, and then the two pictures on the right are some things we noticed regarding the gate, um which in this case would be on the the uh east side, in the front yard. Um, and we notice there's sort of a tracker that's raised, and it looked like they had had to put some, you know, carpeting, and another one had a mat over it. So it was just something we kind of flagged on the site visits, these other uh food card pods that will show up in the recommendations. Um, so our recommendation is to approve all three of those requested special variances to exceed the maximum height of retaining walls and fences in the. Front side and rear yards. Uh, with conditions. So those conditions would be, um, so for the. Front fence and wall, which is on the east side of the property adjacent or closest to Kate Schmidt's. We would want to see the wall be a split-faced block wall and the um fence be a black steel or aluminum picket fence to match the other proposed and proposed walls and fences on the site. So every other wall and fence. On the north um. West and south sides are the split-faced block wall and uh. And um. Black steel or aluminum picket fence. For whatever reason, this one was um labeled as a chain link fence, and um I think it's just a regular. Uh, foundation wall. So we would like to see those match better. Um, we did try to include a little flexibility that they could submit a similar alternative design. That we could review and approve. Um, it's not exactly the same. But we would like to see that continuity. And then um, we would like a condition in there that. The raised tracker for the sliding gate would not be permitted. So the image on the left down there is from the Troutdale food carts, and you can see they. A circle where they do not have the raised tracker. So the Fairview one had the raised tracker, the Troutdale one didn't. Um, we just think that would be a safety issue or ADA type issue. Um, and we could see from the other one that was already being covered with like mats and 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 plastic or rubber uh mats. And then the third condition would be for the the west fence wall um. Nor uh west of the north food cart pod, there's um six feet of landscaping a- as proposed, and then the fence and then another foot of landscaping and then the retaining wall. Um, we would just prefer to see that the fence moved over to be on top of the wall to essentially create seven feet of landscaping. Um, the one foot is is rather small, and in this case, it seems like it would be pretty easy fix to just bump it over one foot. Put it on top of the wall. And widen the landscaping to seven feet. It's the same amount, it's just without having the fence in between it. Uh, so moving on to the requested variance to not provide civic space, um, this again is just the overall site plan, so all of the um space within the fenced area is not considered civic space per our code. Um, and they're not, they're not proposing any other. Um, civic space and are requesting a variance to not provide it. Um, so the intent of providing the civic space is to connect buildings to the public realm realm. Oops. Uh, and create comfortable and attractive gathering places and outdoor seating areas for customers and the public. So the applicants not proposing to install frontage improvements on Kate Schmidt's Avenue as part of this proposal. But the food cart um pod site does have frontage along Kate Schmidt's Avenue right of way, which will be improved in the future. Um, it's unclear whether the proposal includes any areas for outdoor seating, though we do not see any depicted on the site plan. So um, the staff recommendation is to deny this special variance request and to require the applicant to provide. The minimum hundred and eight square feet of civic space in the form of outdoor seating. Um, our recommendation would be to locate the civic space at the end of the proposed footpath, which would connect um to existing footpaths that already are are down there by that Kate Schmidt's Avenue right of way. Um, and have the civic space adjacent to the Kate Schmidt's right of way. Outside of the critical root zones of the retention trees and outside of the eight-foot public utility easement that would be required along Kate Schmidt's Avenue. Um, and we further recommend that the civic space include seating as well as either landscaping or public art or some additional pedestrian element. So the next requested special variance is to exceed the minimum off-street parking. Required by section seventeen ninety-eight twenty by more than thirty percent. So the proposal here, um, as you can see, includes two parking areas. The minimum uh required off-street parking for this proposal per section seventeen ninety-eight twenty is thirty-four spaces. The maximum parking spaces that would be allowed by code. Um, which is under section seventeen ninety-eight ten Q. Is forty-four spaces, so that's thirty percent more than the thirty-four. And then the applicant's request is for sixty-nine spaces. So that exceeds the minimum parking by thirty-five spaces or a hundred and three percent. And then again, the maximum allowed by code would be thirty percent. Uh, the proposal includes forty-seven parking spaces on the surface uh parking parking law on tax lot one thousand and additional twenty-two parking spaces on the surface parking lot on tax lot twelve hundred. Um, so kind of looking through the analysis on this one, section seventeen ninety um zero zero, which is the intent section for all designer views. Um, requires the reviewing body, reviewing body to evaluate all designer review applications based on um. Both sandy style objectives and then also elements that are incompatible with sandy style. And the reviewing body may deny or require modifications to a project with any of the incompatible elements. So the incompatible elements are listed in section seventeen ninety zero zero D. And there's three that are directly related to parking lots. Um. Uh. D three is excessive surface parking lot paving, so that would be one element incompatible with sandy style. D five is disjointed parking areas confusing or unsafe circulation patterns. And then D ten is inadequate landscape buffers adjacent to parking lots. We had our third-party transportation engineer, D K S Associates, review it, and they included. Um, a recommended condition that the development shall remove the ten parking stalls on the north side of the proposed parking lot at thirty-seven one uh one-one-five. Twenty highway twenty-six. Which is tax lot one thousand, and that the parking layout shall be designed so that all parking maneuvers would be internal to the parking um to the parcel rather than. Within the uh twenty-five-foot access easement as proposed. So our recommendation is to still approve the requested special variance to exceed the minimum off-street parking. Um, by more than thirty percent. But with uh conditions, so with a limit. Um, the the condition um as recommended by staff is to approve twenty parking stalls on tax lot twelve hundred rather than the twenty-two that were originally proposed. And then thirty-six on tax lot one thousand, which. Was originally proposed as forty-seven. Um, and this would result in a total of fifty-six, fifty-six parking stalls, which is twenty-two spaces or sixty-five percent more than the minimum requirement of thirty-four parking spaces. So again, seventeen ninety-eight ten Q would allow the applicant to exceed the minimum parking by thirty percent. Um, they're requesting the variance to exceed it by a hundred and three percent, and we are recommending approval of exceeding it, but by sixty-five percent rather than a hundred and three percent. I'm looking at it a little bit more specifically. The recommendation would be to remove um parking stall to the west of tree nine and retain that as existing natural aerial landscaping. That's because the encroachment within the critical root zone of tree nine is right at twenty-five percent, which is the maximum. Um, and that is one of the original uh re- retention trees on the lot. Um, remove the southernmost parking stall on tax lot twelve hundred. Um, and replace that with landscaping. That is due to it just uh not looking like it would be possible to back out of that very easily and be facing like forward to get out of the parking lot. Um, it looks like kind of a complicated um maneuver, so just for kind of safety reasons, um or just traffic flow reasons, I think it makes sense to remove that one. So just those two on tax lot twelve hundred. Uh, the ten proposed parking stalls. On tax lot one thousand that are accessed directly from the twenty-five-foot access easement. Um, that was a recommendation from D K S Associates. Um, who recommended keeping all of the parking maneuvers interior to the site. And then that would just be replaced with landscaping and then retaining the four existing adjacent trees, um which are being proposed for removal, but this would retain those which are required along um private drives anyway. And then to reduce um the proposed extra-long parking stalls on tax lot one thousand from twenty-five feet in length to eighteen feet in length, which is our standard um parking lot. Uh, length, and then um replace those with uh landscaping to create a little more of a landscaping buffer between the Panda Express to the south in this parking area. Um, and then the aisles would need to be adjusted accordingly, and by bumping that up, it would require removing the um southernmost parking stall in the western parking bay. So that would remove um eleven spots. On that tax lot. I know everybody's favorite subject trees. Um, so this is the aerial of the current um site, so again, um. Uh, majority of the um retention trees from the two thousand and five covenant were on um tax lot twelve hundred, which is the proposed food cart pod. So looking at that two thousand and five tree covenant. Um, which was was part of file number um oh-four oh-five-nine, which was the twin cedar subdivision, but it was recorded in two thousand and five. Um, there are twenty-five trees that were required to be retained as part of that subdivision. Twenty-four of them were located on tax lot twelve hundred, which is the proposed food cart pod location, and then one was located on tax lot one thousand, which is the surface parking lot. Proposed area. This is the uh two thousand and five tree covenant. This is the north side of tax lot twelve hundred. All of the trees um. Shaded there are required retention trees from that subdivision. This is the south side of, south side of tax lot twelve hundred. So again, all of those shaded trees are the required retention trees. And then this is tax lot one thousand. Um, so that it had one of the two cedars from the twin cedar subdivision name. The applicant's um retention plan includes um. Most of the remaining trees on tax lot twelve hundred. Um, I believe there's about ten or so that are being proposed for removal. And then the um, they're also proposing. To uh have some alternate retention trees on tax lot eleven hundred, which is the um, the gym facility. So the removal of the large cedar tree on tax lot one thousand was previously approved as part of file number seventeen dash zero seven zero. And that had three conditions. Um, so it was, it was removed as a hazard through a hazard tree permit, which is um. The only way that a retention tree um can be removed legally. Uh, with the tree covenant. And the required conditions, um, you know, a a removal of hazard tree requires a two-to-one mitigation ratio. So the the required um conditions were to plant one mitigation tree. And then pay a fee in lieu for one of the mitigation trees. And this was just to, because the reason for removal. Was partly due to um a disease and partly due to the location of the tree, which was smack in the middle of the site, making it difficult to develop. Um, so it seemed like there would only be sufficient space for one mitigation tree, and then um. The other could be mitigated for with a fee in lieu. And then the tree covenant was supposed to be updated, so that two thousand and five tree covenant was supposed to be updated to reflect the new mitigation tree. Um, the fee in lieu was paid in February of twenty eighteen. The mitigation tree and the updated tree covenant um have not occurred. Um, regarding tax lot twelve hundred, where a majority of the retention trees, so twenty-four out of the twenty-five were located. Um, as best as we can tell, about ten of them might still be present, uh with two of them no longer being in good condition. It's unclear what happened to the other fourteen. Um, we only have that one tree retention or tree removal permit that was submitted, and that was for the tree on tax lot um one thousand. Based on Google Earth, it appears that some of the trees may have been removed um between. Uh, July and August. Of two thousand and twelve in connection with staging for the Fresenius Clinic, but again, we don't have any um permits for this. So if any of the twenty-five retention trees were removed, the property owner at the time um should have submitted a tree removal application in compliance with the two thousand and five tree covenant. And then any approved removal of those um of the trees, which would have had to have been hazard trees to be approved. Um, would have required retention at a, at a um or mitigation at a two-to-one ratio. And that is just uh standard in our code. So the applicant is proposing to retain um fourteen trees on tax lot eleven hundred, which is the um gym, the gym property as alternates to the missing fourteen retention trees. Nine of the fourteen trees are located in the parking lot and are not in a um natural uh natural grouping. Of retention trees similar to what the retention tree area detailed in the two thousand and five tree covenant. Um, so our recommendation would be to process removal of the missing fourteen trees through a hazard tree removal permit. Which is what would be required by the recorded two thousand and five tree covenant. Approve um trees eighty-two through eighty-six as alternate retention trees for five of the removed retention trees, and these are the ones that are located on tax lot eleven hundred, so the gym property, but not in the parking lot area. And then mitigate for the remaining nine retention trees. By either planting eighteen mitigation trees, paying a fee in lieu of five hundred per mitigation tree, or a combination of the two. Um, based on just kind of looking at how much space there is on the two uh tax lots. Uh, that would have the retention trees, which would be tax lot eleven hundred and twelve hundred. It seems like there would be space um. For about twelve trees on those lots, so five on tax lot eleven hundred and seven on tax lot twelve hundred. Um, considering the proposed development and potential future development on the uh on tax lot eleven hundred. Um, and then um, so requiring planting of those twelve trees and then paying a fee in lieu for the remaining six. So that would be the recommendation from staff. The, so again, the overall recommendation to summarize is we are recommending approval. Um, with conditions of the food card pod request. We are recommending approval of um the one requested design deviation. Six of the seven uh requested variances. And then we are recommending denial of the one requested variance, um which. Which would be to not provide the civic space. There are a few additional recommendations as well um that we would like to include. So our code requires mechanical and electrical and communications equipment. So our code requires mechanical and electrical and communications equipment to be screened from you from public rights of way in civic spaces. We did notice on our, our site trips to the Troutdale and Fairview food carts that. The mechanical and electrical, electrical equipment is quite visible from the site, from just from the parking area, from the. Kind of walking up to the entrance. And so we are recommending that you consider potentially requiring it to be on like the interior wall. Rather than the exterior wall of, I believe they're proposing it on the garbage enclosure. But just requiring it to be kind of interior rather than exterior, so it's not quite so visible. From the site. But again, that our code would only require it to be screened from public, so this is just an additional recommendation. We also noticed that the proposed bike parking is proposed to be located on the south side of the building. Across from some of the proposed food cart pods and just to sort of reduce, you know, conflicting kind of. Help increase the, the flow of, of people, we thought it might be better to move those parking spaces to the front of the building, so there's not that. Conflict between, you know, people kind of trying to wait in line at the food carts and park their bikes. Or, or potentially alternatively, we did notice at the Troutdale food carts, they had vertical spaces, so it's just you could kind of hang your bike, bike vertically on the wall. So if they are approved to be on that south side, we would recommend that they be vertical spaces, just again, so they don't, the, the bike parking space has to be six feet. Long and that kind of stretches down into the area where people might be queuing up for. Ordering their food and there's the, you can see kind of the food cart windows extending out, so just to not kind of bottleneck that space, we would request relocating them. Or requiring them to be vertical. And then the last additional recommendation is our civil engineer and as well as staff. Realized that the proposed storm detention manhole is located under one of the proposed food carts. If this were a public project, we wouldn't allow that because it would need to be accessible for maintenance. As a private project, they in theory could do this, but we think it would create conflict to have to constantly be, you know, moving the cart out every time they need to clean out the storm drain. So the recommendation is to just require it to be relocated so that it's not under the food carts. And that concludes the staff presentation on a somewhat complicated one. And any questions?
I see questions, I think it starts on the left. First, is that right? So Commissioner Wagner?
I think, Emily, quick question for you on the parking, I saw three accessible parking spaces. And one of them was over on kind of that separated lot, it looked to me like. The only early access from that side was through stairs. I just want to make sure, is that something that's okay, where essentially they have to go through kind of that dialysis parking lot and around to the other parking lot? To access that. It doesn't seem like the closest parking spot available, am I missing something there?
Um, no, that would be correct, I mean, there's probably different types of ADA parking spot users. Some potentially could be using the stairs, which would be a more direct route. But both the bikes and the ADA parking from that side would have to go down that drive. To, to the west or yeah, to the east gate.
Okay, and sorry, I was trying to read through the Oregon law, but there's nothing that. Says that it has to be a fairly close parking spot or anything like that, it can be relatively far away like that when there's others closer.
Um, I, I don't know the answer to, I don't know the Oregon state law regarding ADA parking exactly, I know they are proposing the two spots. Right, right near the main entrance, which would kind of be the more accessible ones. I would have to double check to see if they're required to have three with this project or if two would be sufficient, I believe two would be sufficient. With the staff recommendation.
If, if I'm reading the pageant for fifty one to seventy five spaces, we are required.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
This is Kelly, I can, I can add a little clarity to that. Yeah, so it's, it's one per every twenty five parking spaces up to a hundred and then it goes to fifty for a couple hundred and then it goes to one per hundred after that. So yeah, if there's, if there's between fifty and seventy five, fifty one and seventy five spaces, we'd need at least three. I think one of the reasons they're putting a, one of them over there is if you look at. The applicant's additional information that they provided that I forwarded to you is that they're not wanting the two lots to really be tied together. Indefinitely, so I think they're trying to satisfy ADA parking on each, however, if that was the case, then. I believe they would need two ADA parking spaces in that overflow lot. Because I think there's more than twenty five parking spaces, so it's one of those things, you can't really have it both ways, right? You gotta pick one and stick with it, and we can talk about more about that later in this, but. Staff will not be recommending approval of not tying them together.
Commissioner McFamenzel, question?
Okay, um, so Emily, this is directed at you, I'm confused. The missing retention trees, so I guess this goes back to our, you know, do we have any teeth in? The codes that we have for retaining trees, I mean, is this whole development owned by the same people? The whole property? Twin Cedars?
It, it was previously, I believe, and they subdivided it and then sold off some of the parcels and I believe. So tax lot eleven hundred, I think is still the original owners and then these two tax lots were bought by a different owner. And then the applicant is a third entity, I believe, I think related to one of the owners.
So I just want to understand as a planning commissioner, so if we do retention trees like we're trying to do. In groups so that. That they'll be healthy. But in this case, in these different tax lots, then. There's really no, there's no assuring that they're gonna stay, that they, somebody new can come along and then. Take the trees out and I guess the second question is. I'm not sure why the city wants to. Give a hazard removal permit for the missing retention trees, I kind of want to know like. What?
Yeah, so the, the tree covenant was our kind of best, you know, best way at protecting the trees. You bring up a good point, clearly didn't work in this case, I'm not sure what happened, it was, you know, I think it was back in twenty twelve potentially, so quite a while ago. It should protect those trees in perpetuity and the only way, as written in the, in the covenant itself, the only way to remove them is. Through having a, a, you know, an I S A certified arborist come out and declare them a hazard tree and then you go through the process and you mitigate for them. So for example, the tree that was removed from tax lot one thousand, it had. Brown rot, I believe, it had some, some sort of rot and. They applied for removal and we processed that application, approved the removal of that tree as a hazard tree and then required the two to one mitigation. So that's the only way that these trees protected by the tree covenant should be removed or at least can legally be removed, I have no idea how these ones were removed. What happened to them? So yeah, that's. Potentially a shortcoming of, of this method. And I forget.
I guess, what are the teeth then, what happens if people take down trees illegally?
I believe that the most we can do is find them a thousand dollars per tree, plus they would have to plant the two mitigation trees. Or pay the fee in lieu, so a thousand plus planting two trees or. A thousand plus five hundred per tree to, for the city to then go plant them on somewhere that we actually could control and protect the trees.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Hook?
Thank you, my question is regarding the frontage improvements. Was mentioned that these were not, this was not proposed with this application, but others were. Planned, can you expand on that a little bit more?
Yeah, so the right of way already exists, there's currently a missing section between where the Goodwill property is, where Kate Schmidt's. Actually is built and this property and that's owned by the school district in Zoned R two, I believe. For whatever reason, and this I don't know the reasoning for either, it was not required to be improved as part of the big school project. That would have probably been the time to do it, but I'm not sure why it wasn't done then. As it is now with that missing section, it wouldn't make a ton of sense to put the improvements in for this one. I think it's about seventy six feet of right of way that they would be responsible for, so our code allows the right of way to either be constructed. Or financially guaranteed, so in this case, they're proposing to financially guarantee it. So that's. We, we would be supportive of that just based on the, the missing gap, but eventually it would, the right of way, I think the right of way is already acquired all the way up to the. North edge of the gym property and then beyond that, I think the alignment's not quite determined, but it would continue. At least per the, the transportation system plan up to connect up to Bell Street.
Well, I don't see any more questions, so thank you Emily for that comprehensive report, now is the time for us to. Have the applicant give their presentation as a reminder that we give them fifteen minutes. And I don't see Kelly.
Yeah, it's, it's actually twenty minutes, so we've been giving them. Can I have the people that want to be promoted to panelists put their hands up as attendees, I see five people as attendees. I don't know if they all want to be promoted to panelists, okay, Ray put his hand up. Just give me one second here, sorry. Sorry about that, Chair. They told me last week and then I lost that email when I got COVID and. Okay, that should be everybody that wants to talk, at least for now.
Who wants to start us off?
Are we ready?
I'll start your time now.
Okay, yeah, thanks, yeah, my name's Tracy Brown and I'll be kind of doing the initial presentation for the group. We also have Ray Moore with All County Surveyors. Blaine Scoheady, who is the architect, Todd Prager, who is the arborist and I believe Daniel Stumpf. Of Lancaster Mobile, Mobley Engineering will be here as well, so yeah, thank you very much. I think this is a very exciting project, this is a significant economic development boost for the city of Sandy. Food carts have been, you know, in Troutdale, Happy Valley, they've been a major draw to those communities and, you know, they're. Not only folks stopping and eating, but I believe there's a lot of spillover. You know, economic activity, so staff didn't really mention that, but I think that we need to point out that this is, you know, a little. Convenience store, these are eighteen restaurants with business owners. And a major structure to accommodate, you know, a number of people, it could accommodate. You know, probably we'll have to ask the architect, but potentially up to a couple, couple hundred people within that facility. So with that, you know, there are a number of variances were requested as you heard from the staff. And really a lot of those have to do with the site itself. And what I'd like to do at first is just share my screen if I could.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, it's being shared, okay. So yeah, first of all, if you can see that the screen, so there are the two sites, we are proposing a trail, this is the portion of. Cage Schmidt, it's this little triangle that would, is a budding. The school district, when they built the school, they dedicated this portion of the right of way and I believe. They paid a fee in lieu of construction of that as well. The, the athletic club dedicated that portion and so this road eventually. Will go to the north and then veer to the, to the west a little bit on the other side of that drainage way to connect with Bell Street. So again, here's the, here's the site, we're proposing some parking spaces to be accessed off of this private drive and we'll talk about that a little bit. The food carts are surrounding the primary structure. And all of the trees that are on this portion of the property that are meeting the standard are being protected. We're not removing any trees that would be otherwise required to be protected as part of that covenant. Uh, we don't know exactly what happened to the, the other trees that were there, but my suspicion is in talking to the owner of the athletic club. Who owned this property until the current buyer purchased it is. Over various years of windstorms, ice storms, those trees failed and. Disappeared, they, they fell down, I don't believe there was any intentional removal of trees over in that area by anybody. Certainly not the current owner, but the only tree that was removed with. Through an application intentionally was that tree, that cedar tree that used to be over on this property. And Emily mentioned it was removed because of disease, so all of the trees are being protected and that's really. Part of the reason some of these variances come into play. So the, the building is over a hundred and seventy to almost two hundred feet away from that right of way. The code wants it to be a maximum of fifty feet, the only way to accomplish that would be to remove those trees, so. It's kind of a no brainer to approve a variance because the city wants these trees retained. And they're retained by covenant, then we have to move the building back. Again, the, the building is also significant distance from highway twenty six. And this is a, this is the private drive, this is actually owned by the owner of the athletic club. And all the lots off of that have an access easement. These are the carts surrounding it, the bicycle park in this here, I'll just touch on the bicycle park and quickly. You know, we, the reason we put it here is because of the covered. And I think that's a better location than having it over here, the other reason we didn't put it over here is. To get carts in and out of this side of the project, this is the primary access. So we need to keep this access clear as possible in order to move maneuver carts. To this side of the property and if there's a bike rack. That might impede that, we don't really think putting hanging bike racks. On the building is a good idea because that, I think that is an impediment to those that may not have the upper body strength. To lift their bike up onto a wall and so we really think it's better to have bike parking on the ground. And the reason we put it here is because of the cover and it wouldn't impede this area here. We'll have Ray talk a little bit more about some of the utility concerns that were identified in the staff report. This is the building, the west elevation looks very similar to the east, except there's a door on the east elevation. With an awning over it. South and north elevations are essentially the same, they have the feature of these roll up doors as well as access doors. And so during the summer months, these doors can be rolled up and have kind of that in out. Flow, you know, I did visit the Troutdale food cart pod that's opened the last couple months and they now have. Pagers, so you just can order, go find a table, get a drink and then the pager will go off when your order is ready, so the queues, I was kind of amazed that. The queuing in front of the carts was almost non-existent and when I got into the building, there was probably two hundred people sitting there. So there's really not a lot of queuing because of that, you're not waiting around for your order. This is the restroom and facility, so we're posing that as a separate facility from the. There is, from the main building and that was a recommendation. Of the owner of the Happy Valley and Troutdale food carts to the owner of the, or the developer of this project. And by the way, the developer of this project, he couldn't. And by the way, the developer of this project, he couldn't be here, he's in Alaska. And I don't know if he's filming another version of the Gold Rush Show or not, but he, that's what he does. His business is to do Gold Rush, Gold Penny. So it's it's pretty exciting project, I think, for that reason as well. So here's the garbage enclosure. So what I'd like to do, what we did. And I sent you all on Friday, kind of a list of our concerns. And really, these are not significant issues. We thought the staff report recommendations were generally good. There's a few things that we wanted to talk about. And what I'll do is just quickly go through those and then I'll ask Blaine to talk about the billing. Recommendations to the restroom and garbage enclosure. And then have Ray talk about some of the items regarding the. You know, the utilities and maybe a little bit into the trees. And then we have the arborist. We can also have the traffic consultant talk about the recommendation to eliminate. These ten parking spaces here. And really, we we think the parking is not excessive. Because as we've seen in other projects that are similar, the more parking you have, the better. Because, you know, if you go to Happy Valley or even Troutdale, there is just not enough parking. And so that's the reason for asking for this variance to the maximum parking. And really, maybe the city code regarding this type of use. Needs to be looked at because the experience out there is thus that, you know, more parking is better for these sorts of projects. So quickly, I'll go through finding eleven. We can just pull that over. Let's, yeah, let's just slide it over. So I'll just quickly go through these and we can talk about a little bit more in our rebuttal. So there's one recommendation to add delineation or some sort of pedestrian crossing. We think that we better serve by painted crossing rather than ripping out the the asphalt there and rebuilding it. These are some items in these findings regarding the restroom and pedestrian or the garbage enclosure. And I'll have the architect talk about those in a second. But generally, we feel that these recommendations, you know, the buildings, those two buildings. Are intended to be kind of in the background and not primary focus and they are compatible. But reality is that these are ancillary structures. And they're not necessarily needing to comply with all of the Sandy style designing requirements. Screening mechanical equipment. This is another one that is a recommendation. We feel like this is something that, you know, it might be a good idea, but the code only requires it to be screened from pedestrian. Or public rights away and civic spaces. And as you see on the site plan, the public right of way is minimum of two hundred feet. And kind of over the hill on Kate Schmidt and almost four hundred feet to the highway. So and the recommendation for the civic space, there's no way you'd be able to see these mechanical equipment. Which should be attached to the garbage enclosure. We can do some screening around that. But other than that, it'd be very challenged to make those. And there's some concerns with the clearances that are required by the utility companies. Civic space, we requested variance to this. You know, essentially, we feel like it's warranted. Because that proposed civic space that staff is recommending would be more than a hundred and seventy feet. And about twenty feet down the hill. So essentially, we'd be building a hundred and eight square foot concrete. Slab with low landscaping and a bench that no one will be able to see. Except maybe some somebody walking around through the woods. So it's it's kind of a little bit silly, we feel like. Reducing the parking spaces. This is probably the biggest item because we feel like the parking is necessary for this type of development. So there's there's reasons to keep all those spaces, as I mentioned, and the shared parking covenant. You know, this is a request that would provide some some level of flexibility by the applicant. If in the event that this project is not as successful as he hopes it would be. He would have the ability to separate the two properties in the future. And if the food cart pod is kept on the one property, then the number of carts would just have to be reduced. To correspond with the parking on that property. Connecting this trail to the our proposed trails to the existing trail, we're not sure where that trail is. And this trail will be off the applicant site. We feel that that's not, shouldn't be a requirement. All of Ray talked about the CDS manhole under the car and the trees. You know, I think I mentioned on those, we, you know, there's a lot of pages. Referencing trees with the the main point that we wanted to bring, and we don't have a problem with those recommendations. The only thing we'd want to take into account is the applicant or the property owner of Tax Cut One Thousand. Already paid a fee in lieu of that cedar that was removed, as Emily mentioned. And so they should get credit for that. So with that, maybe I'll turn it over to Blaine to quickly talk about the. Recommendations regarding the buildings, two buildings. Can you pull those back up?
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you. Tracy and Emily have done a great job describing the three structures on the site, which are the dining building. The restroom building and the garbage recycling enclosure. There are no requested changes to the dining building, but there are requested changes to the restroom building and the garbage enclosure. And those are found in findings thirteen, fourteen, seventeen, and thirty six. I'll look at the restroom building first. The changes requested to the restroom building included a five foot pedestrian shelter over the doors. Adding a split face finish or broom finish to the west elevation. Which I have a question for Emily on that. Add cedar shakes and belly bands to the west and east elevations. Add heavy timber truss bracing with metal brackets to the east elevation. Before I look at the first, third and fourth. Emily, would you mind clarifying on your intent for the split face finish or broom finish to the west elevation? Drawing number four on the screen.
Yes, that's for just unity in the site. So the other retaining walls are using a slip plate, slip face block finish.
So, okay, so we're calling out a split face block wall there. Is that? On the on the left side there, yes.
Yeah, sorry, code wants architectural unity on the site. So that's where the that's coming from for the restroom and for the garbage enclosure. Would be to match the other proposed retaining walls and fences.
Okay, thank you. The restroom building is not meant to be a duplicate or miniature version of the dining facility. It's really meant to be a building that fits in and is in the background and is a service building for the. Customers at the site. So looking at this, the cover entry, that seems a little excessive. The bellyboard is cedar shingles up in the gable ends it on the west end. That seems reasonable. That's something we can do fairly easily. At the east end, the Jane, the design change request is for heavy timber truss bracing with metal brackets. And that starts to get a little heavy for such a small building. And I wasn't quite sure why the east end and the western buildings. As in the buildings would be different from each other. Looking at the garbage enclosure, there's two requested changes for that, adding a split face block veneer. And then also modifying the gate to match the picket fence around the perimeter of the site. Then the intent with the the black chain link fencing with black strapping or webbing inside is to conceal what. Is to conceal the trash containers inside. I'm afraid that if we use a picket fence type gate. Like we have surrounding the site, it'll be difficult to screen those trash containers. And so that's why we went with this material instead of the picket fence. Split face veneer rock, we can add that to the trash enclosure. It's not as durable of a material as CMU block. It might be, again, a little heavy for this being that tall on that wall, but something that we can evaluate. And there are no changes requested to the main dining building. Are there any questions for me?
I guess hearing no questions for Blaine, I'll jump in real quick. I know we're running out of time. But real quick on the CDS manhole, I wanted to point out that, you know, first, it's not a public utility. So there's no code requirement that could specify what the city engineer is asking for. But what maybe the city engineer didn't realize is that the the gray area right here is undercover of the building. I can't put any utilities under this area. And the only other area I have on site is where the food carts are parked. Due to grade and topography and existing connection stub locations, I have to have the mantles kind of roughly in this area. So I stacked them up here under this first card, just kind of intentionally so you can get access to maintain those by just pulling out one cart. So bottom line is I can't satisfy a condition of approval that says remove those out from under the cars because I have no other land to put them in. Otherwise, I would. So just wanted to clarify that. Then real quick on the the ADA parking space in the other parking lot. I believe when I checked into it, just a standard parking lot all by itself of this size needed one space. But if I'm wrong and it needs two, we can put two. So as far as their location to the building that they're they're going to feed to. Yeah, the most direct route would be stairs, but I really have no other option. I did position it closest to the building as possible, so they can come across and go up the sidewalk. And up into the site at this point. So it is AD accessible from from the public or from the private street. Parking reduction, the the space, the code doesn't specify that every space shall be eighteen feet. We, Todd wanted some longer spaces to just be frank. I mean, a lot of people out here drive F three fifty quad cab pickups. A lot of people are small classy Mercedes Benz motorhomes. A twenty five foot space would provide, they may have to take up two, but it would provide enough spacing for some recreational vehicles. The code doesn't speak to that. Again, this is a destination site. And I think we're going to see a lot of a lot of demand and a lot of people maybe with motorhomes that want to come in here, a small one. So the the city had their their engineer, traffic engineer, look at these parking spaces. We also had ours. They didn't mention that. Our our traffic engineer said, you know, it's fine. It's it's given. When when people driving down the drive aisle, see parking spaces on both sides, they they understand that and they're prepared for vehicles to back out. We're doing exactly the same as what they did across the the drive aisle. There's parking spaces. It's not going to be any different. The city staff did bring up a comment about the easement between. Or the lack of an easement between the existing twenty five foot access easement in our site. We've spoken to Paul, the seller of the property, to Todd. He's willing to give us an access easement over the piece of property. To allow these parking spaces and access out to the drive aisle. So we can, with a condition of approval, Emily, satisfy that as far as just adding a condition of approval to obtain the required easement. But yeah, we would definitely like to maintain these spaces. I I've never had a site with too many spaces. And if anybody's ever tried to go over here and get coffee. And actually parked over on the Panda Express side to get across there. I mean, there's never enough parking. And when you have a facility like this, there's going to be a lot of shared use. So we just absolutely requesting that additional space. We we are meeting code requirements. I'm providing detention and water quality for the pavement. We're providing landscaping to the percentages required under code. The existing trees along here are not protected trees. They they don't meet the tree protection requirement. So we will be, you know, to do this, taking out those trees, but we will also be planning a bunch more. And we we do have a detailed landscape plan that speaks to that. So that's that's it. I tried to wrap it up here in twenty minutes. I think we did. So I'm available for questions. Same thing with Tracy and Blaine. Fire away. Thank you.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. At this point, after the applicant's presentation, we'll do public testimony, just some guidelines. Well, I may ask first, Kelly, are there anybody else than the applicants on the phone?
Yeah, there is somebody on.
All right, I'll just go through the process. So guidelines for those who wish to speak, please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it's sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps or letters you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to planning@ci.sandy.org.us. And staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. As a reminder, testimony for this public hearing will be called for in three groups of testimony in favor of the proposal. Testimony opposed to the proposal and neutral testimony. And again, if you're participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone dial nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. So with all that being said, I'll make a call for testimony in favor of the proposal.
The one individual does not have their hand raised.
We'll say nothing seen or heard. So I will make a call for testimony against the proposal.
Again, no hand raised.
Nothing seen or heard. And finally, I'll make a call for neutral testimony.
Again, no hand raised.
Perfect. Let's go ahead and move then to staff recap and recommendations.
All right.
Emily, after you're done, I want I want to speak to just two items, I think.
Sure, sure. Yeah, of course. Okay, so there's, I think, a few things to respond to. Starting with the the crossing inlay. So there's two sections of our code that would require some sort of delineation. Some kind of, let's see, urban design details such as a raised or painted pedestrian crossings or similar devices. Incorporating changes in paving materials, textures or color to use to calm traffic and protect protect pedestrians in parking areas. And then another section of the code requires the crosswalks through parking lots and drive aisles to be constructive material contrasting with the road surface. Or painted, for example, colored concrete inlay and asphalt. So we're recommending that they would have. That they be required to have a paved delineation and then we're further recommending concrete inlays be table specifically. And then again, that's just to be in compliance with the two sections of the code in seventeen ninety one, twenty eight, five and eight seven. Let's see. So let's see the next part, the mechanical equipment. Again, yeah, as we mentioned, as Tracy reiterated, our code does only require the screening from the public right of way in civic spaces. It was just something that we noticed. It was quite prominent and pretty heavily visible. So we're just recommending that potentially consider screening it from the the private area as well. Just, you know, for more aesthetic reasons. It's kind of probably more more of kind of the applicant's. Decision on that in a in a sense, whether they want that to be like highly visible. It just was something that we kind of noticed that sort of just detracted from the site. The civic space being, you know, more than a hundred and seventy feet from the building. Eventually, as we mentioned, Kate Schmitz will be constructed and then the civic space would be located directly adjacent, which is is the intent of the code. To have that civic space. It would be connected by that pedestrian pathway, the five foot self-service pathway. It would also be the only outdoor seating on the site. And we we suspect that people want to sit outside with their food. So it seems that it would be an amenity. It doesn't seem like a huge, you know, thing to require. It is required by our code. It doesn't seem like a very big thing at a hundred and eight square feet with like a maybe a picnic table and a piece of art or or some landscaping around it or something. The existing trail in Kate Schmidt's, Kelly will can speak to this a little bit more. Because I am not super familiar with that specific area because I'm not a member of the gym. I don't live there. But I know that there are a bunch of trails back behind the high school there and I know that they do somewhat connect. I think they are in the right of way, Kate Schmidt. So we're just requesting that this trail kind of connected. Probably will be connected by high school students regardless, but maybe make it intentional with the wood chip rather than. connected, probably will be connected by high school students regardless, but maybe make it intentional with the wood chip rather than having them kind of trample through. That that's kind of that recommendation. Let's see, yeah, the property owner for tax site one thousand, the tax lot one thousand did pay the fee in lieu for the one mitigation tree for the cedar. They have not planted the other one, and we're just recommending the fee in lieu be applied to the remaining trees. So we already accounted for that fee in lieu being paid with file seventeen oh seven zero. Regarding the two other buildings, so the restroom building and the garbage enclosure. Our code does not distinguish between design review requirements for the accessory buildings and then the main building. So that five foot pedestrian shelter is what is required over any any door for pedestrian kind of shelter. It doesn't matter if it's a restroom building or a dining facility or whatever. The it sounds like the cedar and belly band, there wasn't too much pushback for that, but that's, you know, again, getting at the architectural unity that would be on the west and east elevations. And then the heavy timbers on the east end, the reason it's on the east end and not the west is that we do have a section of the code that pertains specifically to to frontage or to elevations visible from the right of way. So again, the Kate Schmitz right of way will eventually be there and it will be visible, you know, sidewalk and a street running along there. The restroom building is actually placed closer towards Kate Schmitz than the dining facility. So this would be tied to both architectural unity and just a code requirement to provide a minimum of three sandy style elements on that street facing facade. Let's see. And then for the garbage enclosure, you know, we understand the intention is to be screened. We are still recommending that the gate be screened, but just that it more closely match the the proposed picket fence look. So it wouldn't be just an open picket fence. It would be screened in some way, but rather than have it chain link with the screening and look more similar to the picket fence. And I I think we could send the applicant examples of this, so we've seen if that would help. See, so regarding the manholes and the storm detention, again, as Ray acknowledges, is these are all private utilities. So were they to be public utilities, we would require this. As private utilities, it was simply just a recommendation for making the applicant or the future owner of the food cart pods lives easier. But, you know, if if they want to move the carts every time they need to clean it out, which I don't know how frequently that is, it might not be that big of a deal. It's just a kind of something we noticed and a recommendation based on that. See. So the, okay, the shared parking covenant, so the surface service parking lot on tax lot one thousand would actually not be permitted as a standalone service parking lot. It only is permitted as an accessory to a primary use. In this case, the primary use is the food cart pod, which is on a separate tax lot. That's why they need to be tied together. If they wanted it not to be tied together, they could put the parking in a building that would be allowed by our code or add a primary use to that second tax lot. Those are the only two ways I can think of where that a surface parking lot would be allowed would either be to accessory to without tying them together, either be accessory to something on that same lot or within a building. So those, I guess, would be options as well, but that would be kind of a significant change to the to the project. So we just would recommend requiring the the covenant that ties those two lots together. And then, let's see. So the the parking spaces, so the the reason they're excessive is just by code. So by code seventeen ninety ten Q defines what's excessive. It defines the maximum parking as being allowed to go thirty percent over the minimum. Anything over that then would be excessive parking and as well as excessive paving. And so those are incompatible sandy with sandy style. And that's just something that needs to be considered with every design review application. And then the ten spaces, so we did have the, so they the applicant submits the transportation analysis. They also submitted a supplementary letter regarding those ten spaces. So we we had some some concerns about potential conflicts of cars backing in and out and vision clearance that that basically those two private drives, the one that goes north, south, and that goes east, west essentially operate as like an intersection. So there would need to be some vision clearance. There are cars using it as, you know, a through a throughway, basically. So we had some concerns, the third, the city's transportation engineer, who's DKS and Associates. They reviewed both the submitted traffic study as well as the supplemental letter, and they concluded that the letter did not address the concerns that there wouldn't be issues with those those parking spaces backing out into a drive aisle and that the recommendation that we included was their direct recommendation to just not to to not allow those ten spots and to require that all of the parking maneuvers be internal to the site. And then the other thing with those four trees, no, they would not meet the city's tree retention requirements, but they are required. We do require essentially street trees on all private drives that are greater than one hundred and fifty feet. Place thirty feet on center, so those street trees essentially private drive trees that currently exist are meeting that standard. So removing them would bring it out of compliance with that standard, but retaining them. You know, they already exist in there in compliance with that standard. Let's see. And then I guess the last thing also on parking, the twenty five foot parking, twenty five foot long parking spaces. Yeah, our code just defines a standard parking space as eighteen feet long. But again, one of the elements incompatible with sandy style is excessive paving. So I get that people drive F F three fifties or whatever, but a standard space is still eighteen feet long. And excessive paving is still incompatible with sandy style, so that's where those recommendations are coming from. And then I think that's all I have. Kelly, did you want to add?
Yeah, I just want to elaborate on the importance of a couple of these. I, to me, the most important thing that the applicant's pushing back against is this delineated concrete inlay speed table. And I'll say this for a few reasons. I I've been going to that gym for over a decade now, and people speed in and out of that driveway. In fact, Paul Reed, the current owner of the gym facility, has put down speed bumps multiple times, and they keep getting knocked out because people keep hitting them so hard. They've also put in a big rock at the corner there, if you notice, where you can kind of turn west to go to washman, because that's because people were whipping around that turn too fast. So I agree with Tracy, this this proposal is phenomenal. I think it's going to be in a great addition to Sandy. You'll see me and my family down there probably pretty often. But in saying all that, I think safety for people crossing from the one parking area to the food cart facility is a is of utmost importance. And I think putting in a raised concrete speed table is essential in this proposal, especially considering if you know the people that are at the Mount Head Athletic Club, there's a lot of high school kids. And when they leave that club, they're whizzing out of there out to the highway area. So I really think that condition needs to stay more than any other condition in the applicant's pushback because I really do have concerns that if it's just a painted crosswalk, that paint will fade over time. And it doesn't slow, it doesn't actually slow anybody down. So I really think that condition and finding number eleven really needs to stay, and I really have a strong feeling on that. A lot of these other things that the applicant pointed out, I don't really have a super strong feeling about one way or the other. I I think Emily brings up some fantastic points, and I think to be consistent with the code, you should evaluate them in that respect. I do think the civic space is important to have something done by Kate Schmitz. I don't, you know, Tracy said it seems silly, and maybe it does at this point, but that road will punch through. And at that point, we will have no way of requiring any sort of civic space down on Kate Schmidt. So it's kind of like an hour and everything. So I do think we should stay with that. And then the last thing, I won't I won't belabor this any longer, but the last thing I really think we need to stay with also is the shared parking covenant. The applicant obviously thinks this is going to be a successful business enterprise, or they wouldn't be putting as much money in to it as they're going to. And I agree, I think it's going to be very successful. I I think the shared parking agreement is important for a number of reasons, especially considering that, you know, one of the one of the main reasons we're here tonight is to kind of talk about going over that thirty percent space threshold and some other things related to that extra parking lot. So I really think we need to keep that shared parking covenant as a requirement. It's required by the development code. I don't see why we would not require it. And furthermore, the applicant didn't ask for a variance or anything for it besides tonight, I guess. So that that I'll just leave it at that, but I I really think the speed table is essential in this whole design for this site.
Well, thank you again, Emily and Kelly. Now we have five minutes for opportunity for the applicant for any rebuttal.
Yeah, thank you. This is Tracy Brown again, and, you know, we we want to work together with the city. And, you know, I I go to the athletic club like Kelly does, and I see him there quite a bit. And, you know, I do see people coming and going out of that parking lot. And those bumps have gotten broken over time, and now there's only one on one side, so people go around it. So, you know, that's, we can, we can live with that recommendation. You know, the applicant isn't here to ask the question, but he's kind of given us the authority to move forward as it's we see fit. Probably our, and, you know, the other two items Kelly mentioned, you know, seem reasonable. You know, we kind of toyed with the civic space. Should we just request a fee in lieu of that, you know, because to have it down there, you know, could be a gathering spot for homeless or who whatever down in the woods there, because that's where it's going to be. But, you know, probably easier just to get it done now. It's a hundred and eight square feet of extra concrete down there. So, you know, we don't have a problem with that. And then the covenant, that was one that the applicant wanted to allow some flexibility, but I think, you know, we are okay moving forward with that, you know, with the plan wasn't to necessarily have the have tax lot twelve hundred, which is or no tax lot one thousand on the other side of the drive as just a parking lot. It would be if it redeveloped because the food cart pod isn't as successful. But we'll go with the fact that it will be successful. Probably the biggest one we wanted to hold on as much as possible is the parking space reduction. We really feel like we're providing, you know, necessary and safe parking for the site and for the use. And so those spaces, those ten spaces that staff's recommending to be removed, as well as the extra long spaces seem to be kind of a a good idea for this type of development. So I guess with that, I don't know, Blaine, do you have anything you would like to say regarding the design? You're muted.
No, there's nothing more I have to say. I think I've made my points clear.
So I guess, I mean, as as we kind of go through this, we don't have, within five minutes, we can't, you know, go through everyone. But I would suggest or, you know, recommend that you consider just using this as kind of a guideline to go through and a very, you know, you can look at each matter and make a decision on that. We think the building themselves, the other buildings are, since they are ancillary, they don't necessarily need to comply with all aspects of sandy style. And really, the the primary building is the is the gem of the of the site. And that's the way we want to kind of present it. See. Screening the mechanical equipment, it sounds like Emily was okay with that. The civic space, we can go either way. The parking, we really want to retain as much as we can based on and the the need for that parking. Connecting the trail, little uncertain as to where that would go and what it would be. Ray talked about the CDC man, CDS manhole, so you know, we feel like that's really essential not to have that requirement. And then there's the tree. I guess we weren't in reading it, you know, it was a little, you know, there's a lot of pages and a lot of discussion about trees. And we were, if we're confused, we apologize, but the way we read it is that tree, that cedar tree that paid the fee in lieu of was not reduced subtracted from the required number of trees. So, you know, we can live with that, and then applicants willing to, you know, pay a fee in lieu if necessary. You know, I would, the only thing I would add, ask about that is, you know, how that money is used. That's just kind of more as a citizen of Sandy. And so I guess that concludes our presentation. If you have any questions for us, we'd like to try to entertain those.
Chair, can I can I just explain how the mitigation fees for trees are retained or used?
Absolutely, please do.
So we haven't really used much of the money on it yet. I'll I'll be honest. We've been collecting fees for it for, you know, four or five years now, and they all go into a dedicated fund that cannot be touched except for tree plantings. So in the future, we're going to use that fund for tree plantings associated with Arbor Day and other items, but it is a dedicated fund, which means it can only be used for expenses related to tree plantings. And there was a fund created just for this very purpose. It's a protected fund in our bank account, basically.
Well, thank, thank you, Kelly. If there's no questions, this is normally where we would close the, you know, take a motion to close the public hearing. In the past, we've also kept it open and allowed discussion to occur in case there were questions that had come up during that discussion. So I guess I will ask, you know, the commissioners, is there an objection to keeping it open or do we need to close it?
I have no preference.
Yeah, I'm okay with keeping it open.
Commissioner McLean, Wenzel, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to say I was okay with keeping it open.
All right. Well, let's just go ahead then and leave it open. Applicant, please know we'll only call on you if questions come up. It's not a time for additional information. So with with that being said, we can start any discussion by the commissioners.
Chair, I just have a quick question about how we want to go through this.
Commissioner Wagner?
Did we want to go through this more item by item, or did we all want to try and tackle all of these at once?
You know, I I'm pretty pragmatic, so I I like the orderly and linear of line by line, or, you know, we're using that. I don't know if somebody has a different opinion. Worth to me.
It makes sense, otherwise it's just unruly.
All right, so we can use, we can use that. What's on the screen so everybody can watch with us, starting with finding eleven. Did you, did someone else have their hand up that had a question? No, all right. Well, let's just start with finding eleven. I think Commissioner Wenzel, McLean Wenzel, your hand was up first.
Okay, I just think that what Kelly brought to the fore makes a lot of sense that that, what do you call it? A raised, I raised a picnic, a raised traffic, whatever he called it, where where you raise the space, whatever's going to give us the most safety for the pedestrians. So and I I know that I've seen it in other places like up at oh, Dutch Brothers, where it's very clearly delineated what where people can walk, and people are more conscientious about it. That's all.
Chairman Crosby?
Yeah, I would just echo what Commissioner McLean, well, Wenzel said. I think Kelly, I agree with him and his sentiment about this crosswalk. There will be a lot of people crossing that over to the food carts. It's probably going to be the primary parking place. The other one is going to be hard to see from the from the street as to whether there's something open. The other one is going to be hard to see from the, from the street as to whether there's something open. Then just, I know for myself, rather than go in and chance that there's an open site, I'm going to grab one where I see one open. And jump on it. So there's going to be a lot of pedestrian traffic coming across between the places. So anything that we could do to really emphasize that this is a crossing, I would be in favor of.
Commissioner.
I agree with the other two measures, and I would also say having it raised also helps. Delineate that this is a connected parking lot for the food cart.
So I'm, before I move on to the next one, I think it'd be easier just to ask, is there anybody opposed to going with staff's recommendation for figure 11? Or finding 11? Alright, that's good, we can move on there. Next one is findings 13, 14, 17, and 36. Anyone want to start with that?
Is there any way to make it just a little larger?
I don't know who's controlling it.
My screen says that we're viewing Ray Moore's screen, so maybe we could.
Oh, there you go. Thank you, Ray.
We're making Ray earn his keep here. Thanks, Ray, for doing this.
So just for clarity, this is the, add the five foot pedestrian shelter over the doors, the split face finished. On the west elevation, cedar shakes, the belly band, the west and east, and then the heavy timber truss bracing. And then the garage enclosure for split face rock veneer, and then modified gate to match the picket fence. Lots of things there. Commissioner Wenzel, McLean Wenzel.
You're on mute, Paul.
I got three screens going here, sorry. I would be in favor of staff's recommendations here. I, I. The, the, just because the restroom is separate from the main building. The code still requires that it adhere to Sandy style. And we also see that, I mean, that's the code, but it's also what's making Sandy so nice. So I think having it just be, you know, not be in compliance with that would be a mistake. And then the split face, yeah, so all of those things, split faced, all of that, I think goes the heavy timber and the metal brackets. And we see it even in these eating extensions to restaurants in town, and it looks beautiful, and it's our code. And I think that we should expect that. I thought that the same thing with the fence, the picket fence, of course, it can be further modified to screen. But I think it's going to be, it's going to look a lot better. And then screening the mechanical equipment as much as possible is going to make it nice. And civic space, our high school students are going to be coming back through that way. So I think that path and civic space are going to be really important, especially when Kate Smith's gets. Extended, and then my last comment was about the 10, I think it was 10 spaces. That would have to turn, would have to pull out into that roadway. And I agree that I think those 10 spaces should be eliminated. I do support having some of those larger spaces for the same reasons that the applicant said. We do have a lot of really big trucks in town, and we have a lot of RVs going through town. So it makes sense to have some larger spaces, but I think those spaces that we're going to have to back out there should be eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you for all that feedback, although I think you jumped ahead to a few findings, but we'll, we'll stick to the 13, 14, 17, and 36 for now. Appreciate that, Commissioner, Commissioner Hook.
I would also be in support of keeping the staff recommendation, especially when Kate Schmidt's continues to be developed and opened. We want to continue to have the Sandy style from that vantage point as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chairman Crosby.
Yeah, I would echo all those sentiments when, when it was first suggested about putting the shelter over the doors. That's what jumped out at me of, well, of course, I mean, just make the building inviting, if, you know. Regardless of Sandy style, just a building without something like that is. Pretty ugly. So, yes, I, and I understand the. The sentiment of the applicant that, you know, they don't intend for those buildings. And, and I think you could almost scale them where the primary building and then behind that is the restroom. And the garbage enclosure is probably third on the list. You know, we aren't requiring that it have a roof over it with beams and so forth, so. I understand the sentiment that they weren't trying to, to show them off, but it does tie them together. And they seem to be amenable to most everything except the, the bracing and so forth. And perhaps staff could, could work with them to. Make that aspect of Sandy style maybe a little bit less obtrusive to them on a small building. I don't know, but. Just some, just some thoughts.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Lee.
Yes, I'm in support of those four findings as written.
Thank you. I'll, I'll add in my two cents. I'm, I'm also in support of staff, staff recommendations. For the, the first four bulleted points, when it comes to the garbage enclosure, I'm, I'm split there. Literally, I do want the split face rock veneer, but when it comes to the modified gate to match the black picket fence. Looking at the position of that garbage facility, what we're really talking about here is the gate to keep the garbage cans covered. And I don't see the sense in putting a picket fence with all that extra expense. I, I think a black chain link fence with strapping inside of it will cover the, the cans up perfectly. I mean, I just don't see the need to have to require that. I didn't see it being street visible. It was, it was back behind. And if we're asking them to put all the surface on it, I didn't, I didn't see why that needed to be picked. But that's just my opinion. I see Commissioner Lee raised her hand again.
I just had forgotten to take it down. Thanks.
It sounds like everybody's in support of staff recommendation on that one then, majority? Alright, let's move to the next one. Finding 35, which is screening the mechanical. And Commissioner Hook.
Since this is not a code requirement, I am. Just fine with leaving it as a recommendation, and it would be up to the applicant whether they wanted to do it.
Thank you, Chairman Crosby.
I would agree with Commissioner Hook on that. If it's not a requirement. I also understand, I mean, I understand the kind, the idea that it, it can be kind of ugly. It's also a little ways further away, but there also Tracy raised some issues of clearance and code. Of getting two meters for, for repair and access. So I think we should just kind of let it go and let them know that, as I said, that they will do their best to. To hide them, but I mean, short of putting them inside another stone wall. Where you'd have to have excess clearance for somebody to get in there and work on it. I think you're left with them hanging on the outside, because I wouldn't put them on the inside of the garbage things. Because I've seen too many garbage trucks pick up dumpsters.
I'll add in my two cents for this one, too. I agree with both Commissioner Hook and Chairman Crosby that it's not a code. It should not be held accountable to do that, but I leave it in the applicant's best intention to do a good job with that. The other side of it is, I, I thought I heard the staff said relocate it inside. And I thought about if it's inside and the area is locked, how does the utility person get access to it? If it's locked in that gate. So I really just thought leaving it on the outside and doing their best job to cover it was the, the best intent. Commissioner McLean Wenzel.
Yes, I would just, I would just echo what you just said, and Commissioner Hook and Commissioner Crosby.
So I, I will say that we're all in agreement that that finding should be removed. Let's move to the next one, civic space. Commissioner Wagner.
Yes, I'm in agreement with staff that it should be maintained here. I don't think it's quite as silly having it on that side as maybe others might think. I know my family uses that setting trails all the time. It's not just high school students or homeless. I mean, my kids went up with my mother-in-law last week and got Frosties from the Wendy's right there. I can totally see us using that prior to the development of Kate Schmidt's. And I think it will even be better once it's developed. I think it makes a lot of sense, and it's really not very big to try and put in. And I think it will actually be a very fairly used space.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hook.
I also support staff's recommendation. I feel that it's important to have a very inviting space, and this will just make it even more so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lee.
Yes, and I also concur.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chairman Crosby.
I would, I guess I concur with a caveat that I, I firmly believe we do need to require the civic space. I'm not convinced that the end of the trail is the best location for. Immediate usability. I mean, staff admitted in the report that. The extension of Kate Schmidt is probably not going to be for a while, if, you know, it's not in the immediate future. I would rather see some civic space, if possible, moved up closer to the building, either. I mean, you're 108 square feet, my goodness, it's a 10 foot square bedroom. You were not talking a lot of what they need, but I would have wondered about moving it up. Towards that big tree, I found the map of what's fenced in, because I understand it has to be outside the fenced area. But just an area that people could take food, and rather than eat inside the building, would be able to step outside. And sit down at a picnic table or something. So I agree, have to have civic space. I would prefer to see it moved a little bit closer where would get more immediate use.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel.
I would support what, what Commissioner Crosby just said. I think he's spot on.
Well, I, I too support the indifference I had with the civic space. I, I thought this was the time to get it. And as, as a person who uses those trails myself, as my daughters, just get, my last daughter just got out of high school. We've traveled those trails back there a lot, and I would love to have an area to take and sit. With, when the food carts come, myself, outside of the gated area. So I think moving it would, I would support that as well. I, I did not like the idea of it sitting on the edge of the, the woods. You know, for whoever, for who knows how long, and, and what it could lead to. But moving it closer in would be, would be. You know, what I would support as well. So I think I'm, I'm kind of stuck. Any other suggestions here, Chairman Crosby?
Yeah, I just kind of what you said, I think that further away, and, and moving it up towards the building, we may only be talking moving it 50 feet. Not, not a long distance, but having it that far away, I'm, I'm also thinking of maintenance. Of kind of out of sight, out of mind, if it's kind of down off a, a little bit of a, a rise. It, it could easily get into disrepair because it's not seen by the public that much. So that's just an added thing.
Would this be approval via staff's recommendation with the ability to. Work with the applicant on moving. The area inland, I guess, or inward?
We could definitely do it that way. I know one of Emily's concerns, which is a valid concern, is not having it. Within the CRZs or the, the protection areas for the trees. So I think as long as it's outside of those areas and located between Kate Schmidt's and the main dining facility. I think we could work with the applicant to come up with a location, if, if that's what the commission intends here.
I think that's what I heard intention. Is there anybody that does not agree with that? Alright, then that'd be our intention. Let's go to finding 92. And this is the, well, this is the parking spaces.
This is the easy one.
Commissioner Hook.
As I was thinking about this finding during the presentations. And there was the additional point that Emily made regarding the required trees. That would be removed in that west parking lot. That must be on a private drive. I'm not sure how the applicant could get around removing those trees and still meeting other criteria of the code. My question to, to staff would be, is there. Does it have to extend the entire drive, or is there other options available?
I can pull up the exact language, but I believe it's 30 feet on center for the private drive. Yeah.
That would mean that from the center of the drive, each way. West and east, it would have to have trees extending 30 feet.
30 feet spacing, like what you see on a typical street, like you have a street tree, and then, you know, 30 feet, and then another tree, and then 30 feet, another tree. It's more or less approximate to accommodate like driveways and things like that, but. That, yeah, that's what the code would require.
That answer your question, Commissioner Hook?
Yes, thank you.
Chairman Crosby.
On, on this particular one. Given the use, and my familiarity a little bit with at least the food cart at Happy Valley. I'm in favor of more. Parking spaces. It's just. This thing will attract cars. I mean, people will drive distances. It's not going to be everybody riding their bicycle or walking from within Sandy. They're going to be coming from Gresham. I believe to, to come there to eat and not just to, because there are people from Sandy that go to Trotville to check out theirs. So it's going to be a lot of vehicles. I think that if anything on those extra long sites. I would be more in favor, and if you wanted to reduce sites, I'd be more in favor of widening them. I mean, I measured my pickup truck when the mirrors are out for pulling my trailer, they're over eight and a half feet. Mirror to mirror on the outside, going into a nine foot wide spot. That's why my wife doesn't like driving our truck up to the gym is because the the parking spots are narrower. So that's another way to get fewer sites is maybe get rid of one and move each site a little bit wider. It also gives more maneuvering room for your the bigger RVs that they're talking about, but there's, you know, there's still not a place for a car and truck and trailer or a motorhome anywhere. But that is as it is, but I'm I'm in favor of the more sites. I I do, I'm okay with reduce, removing those ones that are along the the access driveway heading over to the car wash area. Although it doesn't bother me that they're there because I think that it would be understood a little bit better than than the area where you drive from the by, where are we talking about Taco Bell over to McDonald's and that area back in there? It's just kind of like, you know, everything's everywhere. It'd be more defined than that. So I'm I'm okay with removing them, but I'm also, I would also be okay with leaving them, knowing that they're going to be delineated delineated much better.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Lee.
Yes, I think definitely we need the long parking spaces and Commissioner Crosby brings up a good point about the width. I also would like to see more parking spots allowed under this application. However, it would be best to determine those.
Thank you, Commissioner and Commissioner Wagner.
Yeah, appreciate the desire to have more parking spots. I too have visited Happy Valley food carts. It's awful. Visited the ones in Trotdale. There's a lot more parking. It's so much nicer. And I really appreciate that you're also visiting our other food cart pod in town on a any given time, you know, there's easily twenty or so cars parking along the streets and then there and there's gonna be far fewer carts there than there is in Southern. I think that I would be in favor though of staff's recommendations around the removing the parking spots that are relating to the trees and they're kind of approaching on that area. As far as the ten kind of on that north side of that lock go. I would, if that easement is there, I would be okay with that. I would, I don't know if we can require because it wouldn't be on that same lot or encourage or make it part of the easement, but maybe even some kind of other traffic calming sign device over there even to maybe stop people whipping around since we have more vehicles kind of pulling in and out of that space there. And then I'm indifferent as far as the extra long parking stalls go.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McTang Wenzel.
Yeah, I I appreciate everything that everybody shared. The one thing that I I know I'm always harping on trees, but trees are actually used as traffic calming devices and to take away street trees. I just want to say that again, that's that that goes opposite of what we want to do. It's in terms of our code. It's more paving, it's less trees, it's less aesthetically nice. So yes, I agree, we need parking. I agree that we need the longer spaces. Chairman Crosby brings up a good point that we need wider spaces. But maybe the staff can work with that with the applicant around, you know, how can we assure that there's as many trees as possible, especially along the roadside? So that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll give mine on this topic now. I agreed with the staff's proposal on removing the parking stalls to the west of tree nine on tax flight twelve hundred. And also with removing the southeastern most proposed parking stall on tax lot twelve hundred and replaced with landscaping. I just thought from a accessibility standpoint turning, as Emily described in her presentation, it made it difficult, more difficult to see. And if you remove those, you could actually add width then to all the other spaces. And it might give the advantage that most of you are asking for. And then I had no issue with the the long, the long spaces myself. I was indifferent to it. That's why I bought Subarus. As far as the ten on the backside, I didn't see any reason why they we would not use those for parking. I've I've been in parking stalls all across the US where you have to watch where you're you're going with the right speed curbs in place. Traffic will slow down and it all, I agree with everyone that says additional parking spaces are going to be needed. As a frequenter of these food carts in other cities, there's never a good parking spot. You always need more and less. So I would, my recommendation would be to remove the two that were inside and then allow the ten on the on the backside. So I see Kelly's hand up.
I'm I'm taking the minutes and I think your direction on all the other findings has been fantastic and very clear. I don't know if you guys are planning on doing some additional. I I don't think I have a clear definition of what you're proposing on this one. As as a body.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. I was waiting for that. I I heard, I think, three or four different proposals, so we need to come to some consensus on the recommendation to staff. It sounds like everyone said more parking is better. So that's a, that's a familiar, a familiar line.
I can, can I? So I think what I heard is a few people voiced that the two that Emily suggested be removed from tax lot twelve hundred, people were in favor of that. I didn't hear anybody say they weren't in favor of that. Is that correct?
Looks good.
And then I, from what I heard is everybody was fine, but I think everybody that I heard from at least was fine with the longer spaces that were being proposed. Okay, so the last of where I heard a mixed opinion was on the additional ten parking spaces. I think that's what it comes down to, Chairman.
Commissioner Hook.
I'm still with the point that if we were to allow the ten spaces that we could be inhibiting on another portion of the code. And that's something that I would like to avoid. But I do agree that more parking is beneficial. I just want to make sure that we're not not harming ourselves by allowing one thing, but then causing another variation.
Kelly, any substance to that that we should be aware of? You're muted.
Honestly, you could go either way. It's your decision. This, this isn't a housing application, so we're not bound to the clear and objective code regulations. The applicants requested quite a few variances and deviations and I think I think most of them were needed. I'm not saying they requested a lot that were needed. So you know, on those ten parking spaces, what you decide is what you decide. I don't, I don't think there's going to be any issues with, you know, clear and objective because it's not really bound to that in this case. And also it's not really setting precedent. I would say this is very unique. So I, you know, I don't have any concerns from like a, from a procedural standpoint.
Chairman Crosby.
Yeah, I was in in all of this discussion, I kind of lost a question for Commissioner Hook is what, what were your areas of concern that by retaining those ten spaces, we are potentially jeopardizing some other code or something? I I missed the details of that.
It was for the private drives where your trees are required to be maintained on the private drive. And by removing the four trees to add those ten spaces that we had another potential code violate.
Here's, this room, he's referring to Chairman Crosby, the the thirty-foot on center for the trees that when you build them in residential area, we're trying to make sure we have areas for driveways. And where it's not clear and objective in this case is we're not in a residential area for driveways. You're in a parking lot.
Yeah, I guess what what I was picking up that what Commissioner Hook is, what you're saying is by removing those trees, are you concerned that are they going to be replaced someplace else? Or well, I guess.
No, I was just, I was just concerned that if we removed them, would we be causing another issue with other requirements that needed to be maintained? But I I can support it with Kelly's additional feedback that he just provided.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I'm not, I'm not trying to push you guys one way or the other. I'm just citing that. We don't have the attorney here tonight and I do know enough to know that procedurally you're fine to approve it how you see fit on this, on this particular issue.
Commissioner McTang Wenzel.
Yeah, I I guess the the one thing I want to say is I I I get that that the parking is needed. I also, when I look at the overlay of this, it is a massive amount of parking between all the different buildings and especially the the gym. And I mean, it's just, it's an issue of all the heat that that's going to produce. And I guess I would feel better about it if the applicant could add some more trees wherever possible, wherever feasible, so that we could, especially if we're going to opt, if we're going to take down some trees. You know, where else can trees be put to help us with? Yeah, I mean, we're sitting in the middle of a heat wave right now. Taking down trees is going to make it more hot, building more, covering more ground with pavement is going to make it more hot. So I I guess I would just, I would feel better about taking those trees down if other trees were added. That's all.
Commissioner, you could, and I don't mean to speak out of turn here, but I'm just in the just trying to save a little time. You could, if you wanted to seek you know, you could propose something like additional mitigation trees for those four trees that are being removed in addition to the other trees that they're proposing.
Okay, when when is the right time to do that? Now?
I think you could do it now. Sorry, I'm just trying to say yes, Tom.
Yeah, I guess, I guess then that would be my request of the, my fellow commissioners is if we're going to let them take down these trees, then where are we going to put some mitigation trees? I mean, just on balance, we're all sitting through these and and we're seeing more and more trees removed and we know we need to keep as many trees as possible or plant new ones.
Well, Commissioner McTang Wenzel, I'll, I'll support that as you know, my position on trees. So I absolutely agree with the ten stall stain and the trees being planted somewhere else. I see a whole bunch of thumbs going up. Anybody disagree with that? Kelly, you clear on direction there?
Yeah, so you're proposing the ten additional parking spaces, but to mitigate for the four trees that are being removed, you want an additional four trees to be planted above and beyond any other trees that were in the proposal or being recommended by staff?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
Happy medium. So finding ninety-eight, then this is the connect proposed path to existing off-site trail.
Did we miss the one about ninety to the shared parking covenant?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. That's the, you're right. Sorry, Chairman, I'll go back. Findings ninety-three and sixty-four for the shared parking covenant. Commissioner, I always have you as pulling, right?
There. Yes. So I think this is the one that Tracy said that the applicant was okay with. And I think if they're okay with it and that we leave it as it stands, as it's written.
Staff recommendation, you say?
Yeah, yeah.
Thumbs up, thumbs up. Thumbs up. All right, that was as staff recommends. Looks like everybody's in agreement with that. So let's move to find finding ninety-eight. The path to existing off-site trail. And Commissioner Pullman again?
I think that's still my hand up from before. I'm reading my notes.
Chairman Crosby.
I'll admit that I have not walked down in the woods by there. So I I can't say where that path comes out if there's a logical and easy connection to a trail that may or may not be there. Probably wherever it is terminated, a trail will come. And I I just haven't been down there, so I I can't say that you know, here, here's where it ends. And if there's a trail that's really twenty feet to the right, well, is is that connected to it or does it have to be straight across from it? I'm more comfortable just leaving it as it is.
Commissioner Wagner.
Yeah, reading through the letter that they sent here, it seems like the applicant was concerned that doing work on others' property. So I understood in the presentation that right away has already been dedicated to the city. It's just unimproved at the moment. So it essentially be doing work on city property and the city's the one requiring to do the work. So I don't see that there'd be a concern there. I think it makes sense to connect if it's, you know, relatively close and within that right away there. That would make a lot of sense to me. I mean, if it's not reasonably close, then maybe they can work with staff on this to say, hey, you know what? It's not in that right away. Then it doesn't make sense to do.
Commissioner Lee.
I don't think we have enough information on this to really make a judgmental decision, not knowing what trail or where. So I guess I could see it not being a requirement. And I just wanted to say that I'm getting unstable internet messages all the time, so I hope I stay with you for a while.
Thank you. We're almost done, I think, but getting close. I was just looking for the recommendation on the staff report for this area. If either Kelly or Emily can point me in the right letter designation and to see what the rest staff's recommendation was on this.
Emily might be able to do that. I I was going to say, I think Commissioner Wagner's recommendation was kind of spot on, actually. Is that the condition could be to connect to a trail location if located in Kate Schmidt's. And if not, if there isn't a trail located in Kate Schmidt's, then it wouldn't be required. Because I do agree with the applicant with Tracy, that if it's outside, I think I'm like ninety-nine percent confident it's in the right way. But if it was out, like Tracy said, it could be, then I agree, they can't be going onto somebody else's property.
Sounds like you got all thumbs up and direction on that one. Then let's follow Commissioner Wagner's recommendation. So finding seventy-six, which was the CDS manhole under the cart and they were requesting it be removed. And we heard Ray say that there was no place else it could go on. So Chairman Crosby.
My response is simple. I'd say that's their problem. I mean, it may not make sense to us to have to pull a card out to to get to it, but it's the way they designed it, since it is a private, private property.
So the recommendation you make is to remove this. Everybody's thumbs up? That was removed. Finding eighty-six and ninety-five. Our favorite topic, trees. And how lucky it is, the last one. So if I read this right, Emily or Kelly, just correct me, is that what we're, what what they're asking for is to not be responsible for the trees that were already removed, fallen, disappeared? Is that right? Is that what I'm reading there?
Oh, my understanding is that they thought we weren't accounting for the
Oh, my understanding is that they thought we weren't accounting for the fee and lieu that's already been paid. But we were accounting for that. So the, the requirements from the file seventeen dash zero seven zero required, payment of a fee and lieu for one of the mitigation trees and then planting the second, and that should be accounted for in the staff report.
And then I, and then you have yet that long explanation about what they could do and what their options are, about mitigation trees, and then the six remaining trees, they could, you know, uh, pay that fee and lieu for. Uh, Commissioner Hook?
Uh, I am in favor of keeping, um, staff's condition, uh, since, uh, the tree in lot one thousand has already been taken care of. The only question that I had is, with regards to the trees that were removed illegally, it sounds like there's been some ownership changes of the property. And I'm, I'm just not sure it would, it would be right to charge someone who's bought the property that had no, no, um, they weren't bound by that covenant, because they are new owners of it. And so I, I guess, uh, a little more guidance from staff would be helpful on what has transpired.
Yeah, there's two owners of the, so one, there's one owner who bought two of the tax lots. And then there is a separate owner who owns the gym parcel, which was the original owner, to my knowledge of when, uh, well, they're the ones who signed the two thousand and five tree covenant. I'll put it that way. So it's the same owner, um, who signed this application as well.
Um, so that's the gym that signed on for it as well. I mean, I, can we find, the original owner for those trees and then leave the applicant? Um, as is?
Um, so it's not a fine, it's just to suggest, so a, a, as the condition says, I mean, you could recommend, um, just planting all of the mitigation trees, just based on the, the space. It kind of looked like the areas that haven't already been or won't be impacted by development, um, may somewhat limit the, the number of trees that could be planted, um, in those areas, but you could just require them all to be planted rather than the fee and lieu. Um, I'm sure that the applicant and, and the, um, two property owners could work out, you know, who would pay. It, it would be, what was it? Can't remember what the, the cost would be, three thousand dollars maybe. So I'm sure that's, um, not very much compared to the project cost. Uh, but I mean, we can leave it as a flexible, um, condition of planting the mitigation trees if there's room, and then if there's not room for the remaining six to mitigate for them.
Thank you. Uh, Chairman Crosby?
More of a question, but her clarification. My understanding is that this, tree covenant was originally put in place, with the twin cedars subd- subdevelopment. And that that tree covenant would be applicable to any, present and future owners of any of the lots or any of the, anybody within that property. Um, there was, there was a, something got lost in the translation for, at some period of time. But the, the tree covenant exists for whoever buys it. Um, that's right. At first I was confused where they were looking at some of their retention trees were up on the gym property. And I thought, wait a minute, what? How can you, you know, put your retention trees on somebody else's property? But now I understand that this covenant covered the whole, the whole chunk of dirt, and is applicable to any present and future owners. And so that's, that, it's a big picture, which is complicated by now separate owners. So you, you enter a, um, an element of more possibilities for things to be forgotten and, um, um, not follow. So I don't know how you enforce that, but, um, that was, that helped me in my understanding of it. I don't, I don't know if my comments meant anything, but, uh, you have it.
Thank, thank you, Chairman. Uh, Commissioner Pullin?
So if I read this correctly, the applicant agreed with staff's recommendation other than the, tree that was in question. And we've come to a conclusion about that. So it looks like they've, and they, then Tracy said they were okay with it if that tree's already been accounted for. So I think we don't really have anything to do with this anymore.
Thank you, Commissioner Pullin. I read it too. Um, I saw, I sa- I saw Commissioner McFane Wenzel's hand up. You took it down already? You good with that? So it looks like we would approve staff's recommendation. Anybody opposed to that? That's staff's recommendation, Kelly. So looks like we've, uh, we've tackled each one of those. Now, who's gonna repeat it all in a motion? I don't know.
Yeah, you, you don't have to do that, thank God. Um, yeah, we, we have a written, uh, how the attorney has advised us in the past is, your first motion will be to close the public hearing. Your second motion will be, the approval of the application, and then you can reference as otherwise noted in the discussion with staff and, um, captured in the minutes.
All right, perfect. So without any objection, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Then, um, motion by Commissioner Wagner and seconded by Commissioner Lee, at nine forty-seven PM. And now I will take a motion. Oh, wait, I gotta do all thumbs up. Sorry, put those back up again. Nobody took it away. Perfect. All unanimous. The next one will be somebody to put a motion forward for that, that conversation we just had.
I move that our conversation be approved.
Yes, I, so I, I think the motion would be you're approving the Riffle food cart facility with.
Okay, the, I'm looking for the top of that. I move that the Riffle staff report review conversation be approved. Does that sound better?
File two-two dash one zero two.
Yeah.
I second that.
So Kelly, I have, uh, approval, motion of approval, um, from Commissioner Pullin, seconded by Commissioner McFane Wenzel.
Do you wanna roll call?
Yeah, let's do a roll on this one.
Uh, Commissioner Pullin?
Aye.
Commissioner McFane Wenzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Wagner? Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Crosby?
Yes.
Commissioner Hook?
Yes.
And Chairman Maithen?
Aye. So that was, that was productive and efficient. Thank you all. I think, um, as I, I look at my notes, I'm at the last line, so I'm a little nervous to do it, Chairman Crosby. But is there anything else anybody has to say or mention, uh, before I?
Can I mention one thing real fast before commissioners do? We won't have a meeting in August, cause neither one of these got continued, so.
Perfect. Um, Commissioner Wagner?
I think Commissioner McFane Wenzel had it first.
Oh, Commissioner McFane Wenzel?
I just wanted to say that you've done a tremendous job tonight, Chris. So thank you for, uh, for having, taking us through all of this. Good job.
Jerry, Commissioner Crosby coached me on Sunday. Uh, Commissioner Wagner?
I'll echo, uh, Commissioner McFane Wenzel's sentiment there, and also, uh, thank you to the rest of the group. This was, uh, could have been very complicated with lots of different pieces, and I did, we all moved through, uh, very expeditiously. That's true. Talking where it wasn't needed. So thank you all. I'll get some sleep tonight.
Well, I, I'll third that, cause last, last month, we had a complicated meeting that we found the way to the end, with, uh, Commissioner McFane Wenzel doing it. And this one seemed like it could have been that way too, but thank you for all your diligence to get through it. So with all that being said, um, I'd like to, I think, get the words right, you know, get back to that last page. Um, I guess I adjourned the meeting. Thank you all.
See you next week. Next, uh, see you in September.
September.
I think there's a Beach Boys song like that.
I was gonna say next week. Come on, man. Have a good night, everybody.
Yeah, we'll see ya.
See you August fifteenth.